So we ask that you online keep yourself muted unless you want to speak. Uh, so we're gonna go ahead and begin the meeting.
Evening everybody, welcome to the City of Angels meeting. Uh, we will start with vote call please.
Mayor Bolio.
Present.
Vice Mayor Herndon.
Present.
Councilmember Fitzornia.
Present.
Councilmember Bonapata.
Present.
Councilmember Scherrato.
Present.
Staff is present.
And we'll do pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next will be item number three, recorded on a closed session, A and B, direction was given to staff.
Uh, and just the one correction, B is north by eight.
Item number four, approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Anybody in the public, staff or council that wants to amend? If not, I would promote your approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, same sign? Next is item number five, public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda, that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters may be addressed. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on the subsequent meeting agenda. Speeches are limited to five minutes per person. Start online those, see if there's anybody there first.
Are there any members online that would like to speak during public comment?
Anybody in the room who would like to speak on public comment? Once twice, we will close public comment. Then move on to item number six, which is consent agenda. Is there anybody, members of the audience, staff, council that want to pull any items on the consent agenda?
So Alvin, I would like to pull item A, which is the accountable.
Anybody else? I will look for a motion to approve consent agenda B.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, same sign? I vote B and Jen, you are up on item A.
So I just wanna call attention, I called earlier today and spoke with Rebecca on the phone about something that I did see on here and I just wanna make it public. Um, uh, down the ways where it does have the Citygate payable, um, looking as though we paid eleven thousand, three hundred and two dollars to Citygate this month. And then I remembered that a couple of months ago, we paid them upfront, uh, like a lump sum of, I thought it was fifty thousand or something, or forty thousand. So that didn't add up. I did call talk Rebecca and she clarified that for me. So I wanted to make that opportunity available to you guys so that we know.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's what we did. The initial payment and then they're in the business as well.
And that again, I just need to make sure that we were doing our duties.
Anybody else on item A? I would then look for a motion to approve consent agenda A.
Aye, I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, same sign? Next we regular agenda, item seven A, adopt resolution twenty-two dash sixty-two, establishing when and how engineering charges will be assessed for routine services and project construction activities on a time and material plus five percent administration cost. Establishing policies for deposits and deposit replenishment and leading sections six point zero four and six point zero five of the city improvement standards. Any objections?
Mr. Mayor, council members, we discovered that when we have really, really, really large projects and excessive multiple millions, that when we do that, um, we basically have to ask people before they even touch the project site to pay three hundred fifty, five hundred thousand, a million dollars even, and they don't always have the cash flow to do that. So, um, the city engineer and I work out a method in which we will ask for a certain amount of plan check and then determine how much more will we need over the course of the project and have them basically do a retainer type of a process for really large projects. Single-family residential encouragement permits will stay exactly the same. They'll be predictable for residences. People like PG and E and Comcast who do lots of work on our rivalry, their encouragement permit will stay the same, right? The only thing that will change is we're gonna break up how we do our charges and establish a policy for payment and replenishing a deposit just like a full retainer process would work. Do you have any answer to the question?
Staff, council questions?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, well, I'll bring up public in a second.
Oh, okay, let's just specific.
I'm not going anywhere.
Oh, no, we'll go, we'll stay right, we'll stay going. Okay, so actually come on up, I'll open up public comment, I'll go.
Well, I gotta go up there.
Yes. We're up here, you gotta come up there.
Aw, man.
I, I just, my ears perked up because as a Habitat board member, I saw like a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar, is that really directly what you're saying?
That, yes. And so, um, so, so something, number one, the outlay of that much money, um, on a project like that was kind of a heart attack.
Yes.
Um, and then in addition to that, we wanted to make sure that we give a developer, when they're doing a project like that, the ability to do things that can alleviate some of the workload that would have fallen on the city. Um, so as we're going through that process, um, not only it doesn't take the burden off of them in terms of having to come up with that much upfront end, it also will end up saving them money because we can work with them to identify different ways that they can proactively, um, kind of get organized and coordinated on their end. So it's easier when we do reviews. Um, and so, yes, that is basically what sparked the conversation internally to say, hmm, this isn't quite gonna work. Um, our policy is really determined based on just kind of the normal single-family home, not, not the larger dwellings.
Perfect, thank you.
We have a construction meeting tomorrow.
Well, they have very good news for you.
Oh, yay. Thank you.
Any other public comment in the house? Okay, Rose, beginning online. I will close public comment and I will bring it back to staff or council if there's any questions. If there's not, I will look for a motion. I will, go.
I'm the lady talk.
That was good.
I'm the lady talk. Oh, my.
You won? I will make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two sixty-two.
Am I right that now I will?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, same sign? Okay, item D, approval of res- approval of resolution number twenty-two sixty-three, waive and reduce fees for reapplications on expired single-family residential building issued two thousand and six, six-five-three Lakeview Court, Angels Oak subdivision, A.
Mr. Mayor and council members, you have three choices on this item. Actually, we have many numbers choices you might want, but to try to narrow it down, you can either waive none of the fees and require full payment of all possible fees reviewed, in which case the applicant would have to pay seventeen, over seventeen thousand dollars. You could waive some of the fees and require partial payment. That's actually staff's recommendation, which I'll go into in a moment. Or you could waive all the fees and require no payment. Staff is actually recommending that you require payment of fifty percent of any mitigation fees totaling, they would then total instead of thirteen-six-six-two, they would total six thousand, eight hundred thirty-one, thirty-four, based on the fact that fifty percent of the house is completed and only complete fifty percent of the house at this point. So trying to make it a level plan, feel if something came in today and we just do one hundred percent of the house, you can charge some one hundred percent of the fees. Um, pay all building inspections and plan check fees based on hourly rate for SCG. Will you consult that? Waive all remaining fees and perhaps most importantly, submit a written timeline for inspections at occasion of single-family residents so that we can try to hold them to an extent. I'd be happy to answer any questions, although I noticed that the applicant on this, I did see online, I don't know if these are favorable. No questions?
Thank you. Staff, council, what questions do you have for Amy?
The house is currently fifty percent complete.
Estimated yes.
So that's how you're arriving at a fifty percent fee structure.
For mitigation and mitigation fees, otherwise they end up paying.
This is an owner builder? This is an owner builder? Or is this a contractor?
Owner builder.
Okay. Who also was a licensed contractor at one?
Yes.
Yeah. And they're not treated any differently as far as fees go or inspections go or anything? Uh, if you're going out to inspect on a owner builder situation versus a contractor situation?
No. They definitely, they will actually pay the actual hourly rate of CSG for any work that needs to be completed right now.
I wanted to just.
Thank you.
Well, asking for me, yes, Brad, Bradley one?
Not yet, Brad, was it Brad, is that what you said your name was?
Yeah, Bradley, Brad's.
Give me just a minute, Brad, we haven't opened public comment yet. So if you guys know, if you're fine, you can use yourself for a minute and I'll, I'll, I'll leave the public comment in a second.
Uh, the real plot was, wouldn't sort of, but we'll, uh, thank you, we'll wait.
All right, thank you. Okay, council members, any more questions for a second for staff?
I might have a question about the fees that they have paid in two thousand and six. You have a list of a whole bunch of fees here, have they paid all of these?
Yes, everything in the left-hand column has all of them paid. They already paid their school impact fees, they already, top payments back then, up to that point. Hook-up fees, everything else.
But the next column is what they would have paid in this, in two thousand and twenty-two? What the fee impact would have been?
Yes.
And the difference.
And the difference is seven, that's why I wanted to ask you, the difference is seventeen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
That's correct.
And then they would have that maybe on the recommendation to six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-four.
Correct, and that's on the grand total, they would get that plus in setting.
The hourly rate of inspection.
Yes.
The CSG.
And the biggest thing is back when they initially pulled, um, their permit, there weren't, the city didn't have mitigation.
But in two thousand and sixteen?
Yes, in two thousand and, uh, six.
Six.
Well, they pulled it in two thousand and six, but.
The police fires was in two thousand and sixteen.
Correct.
So that got added.
So when those original fees were calculated back way back when in two thousand and six, the city didn't have any mitigation fees. So, um, it was determined in, what, twenty-sixth fifteen? Uh, that the city really needed to start charging. So when you're building a new home, um, the assumption is that that population is gonna come in and they're gonna impact your fire, your roads, your police. So the mitigation fees are to help fund those activities.
So in two thousand and sixteen, when those fees became a thing, it, the house was started, it was halfway done. At that time, if somebody.
Paying with a brand.
Paying with a brand. It would have been full fees.
Full fees, cool.
Okay, that's why you're recommending fifty percent of those, because at that time, it was packed. Is that my answer here?
That's.
Okay, I'm trying to round my mind.
You guys can of course do any recommendation you want, but that's not.
I do have one more. So is this gone between before planning or anybody else, or is this coming straight to us?
Only comes to you because it has to be waived or in, you're the only ones.
Thank you. Anybody else up here before I open it to public? Okay, I will open up the public in-house first. Is there anybody in the house that would like to comment? Anybody online that would like to comment? Feel free to unmute yourself and state your name, please.
Can't hear you.
That is included, Austin Yarres, builders, number six-five-three.
Yes.
At this time?
Yes.
Okay, you guys got so.
Yeah. You got five minutes. Five minutes.
First thing I want to thank everybody gathered here for this meeting. Um, this is a, uh, major hardship for us this whole time, but you guys, I can recognize that and it's reflected in all of the damage I have. The only thing that's happened on topic of it is another seizure, not another, but a seizure that has set me back physically as well. Um, I personally believe the house is more like seventy-five percent done. There's just the downstairs rock, um, all the lids, um, all the plumes in, all the electricals in, the electrical panels fired up two hundred and. Uh, so obviously there's some propane to put in and then put the water service as well. So I don't know if the property values reflected in the assessments and, and the tax, I think that's totally been brought up, uh, to speed with the improvement of this property. It's a one, one of the kind houses, totally custom, which added to the, the length of, uh, production. And I guess the bottom line is I want to thank how much Amy.
And Alicia.
And Alicia have gotten me back for us on this. I think it would be goose, uh, the council and everybody else involved, especially including us, to have this move forward. The only thing I can think of is because of these special assessments in sixteen, obviously I've been using the roads, you know, the dump, I've been using the roads, uh, at Calgares, Longburg and such. I, I, I believe most of that probably for the new freeway that goes up to Murbies, which I can actually get from my mom's in nine minutes now, if, well, she's an artist up there. Other than that, I would like to get it to the point where it is either inhabitable, it's finalized, which would be of all of us, especially for the safety reason, or still at the same point, I could have it to the point where if I'm not gonna continue since I'm gonna be seventy on my next birthday, that, uh, perhaps then it can sell, can sell quicker. Uh, as we have another lockdown low on Ligo that we just put up and apparently it's the only lot for sale in this market that's been decimated. You know, like the economy and, uh, their price of materials to build. I paid over a hundred dollars for a piece of light with two weeks ago, it's pretty. So I don't know if there's, uh, with everything you guys have offered up, it's astounding. I cannot believe how you've gone to that for me. My thing is, is there anywhere, where we're on in these two thousand and sixteen fees that I was not even aware of until trying to get this, uh, up to speed and up to code and then the loss of our son on top of it. But that would be my major question because I'm very impressed already, how far you've come.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I question, if you'd like to have for me to, to help clarify any indiscretion or, or, uh, you know, what, what indeed is, is accomplished, I know by.
I, I have.
And let me, and we can start over the five minutes. If, if you wanted to end your public now, then your wife can speak too, I would assume would be just fine. So if we wanted to start with her five minutes, that would be great too now.
Excellent, thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Uh, just wondering.
Absolutely.
Uh, thank you, as he said, we appreciate you just hearing this even though, um, it's been a hellish time. I don't know if, if anyone there has had a chance of it and they need to read the letter. Reflecting, uh, it's just exactly the hardship that we have endured and I know we all have hardships. It's had them rather too. And, uh, extremely over the years, just devastating. So we never have had our opportunity, we would love to beat the hole in the roads, which we really have helped. Um, given that, as Brad said, we, if, if there is a way to even, uh, do a little bit more on this two thousand and sixteen fees, which are just astronomical, I don't know that we would have. Yeah, I wanted to open a flower shop, but, um.
She's a. She's dead. No more flowers on that, this was something else you were told.
So, uh, I don't know if you've read the letter, I don't know if you've had a chance to see the home. We have had people nearby saying, my god, it's done, we've increased our property values. Thank you, we can't wait to move in, unfortunately that hasn't happened. I don't know if it will, it's looking doubtful, especially with these fees. Um, we're, you know, time flies, we're already old folks and, um, just on fixed incomes and now my husband had brain tumor and he just had surgery four weeks ago on his brain. And, uh, yeah, it's all just been kind of overwhelming. So, um, life is more important than possessions and we do understand that. But given everything, if you haven't read the letter, I would appreciate it if you could take a moment to look at that. And, uh, given that we, I believe, increased the property values for the other homeowners, I don't know if there's any, any, in any way that that affects the, the financial end of it, but, um.
You are not looking for a decision or I will make, you will make ponder.
Yeah.
Just off all the parameters of this.
So, sorry, that is the only thing I'm bringing for it again, is just given the, uh, expenuating deaths and, um, that just literally, uh, pulled the tracks out from under us regarding this project. And that is why it has taken so very long and now we're just finally revisiting it. So you could do, uh, whatever you can do, we would be grateful and I just appreciate that, that we had the opportunity to speak. Sorry, we're kinda new to this, so.
No, we gave it all, but this is the United States before, it's in, you know, respectful fashion and not, you know, out of the standard, especially with, you know, it's the neighboring neighbors concerned too.
Even when the financials.
Start calling me, Mr. Winchester.
Even when the financial end of things, uh, was extremely devastating, trying to find, uh, peers for my son who cancerous too far and the other losses, we have always paid our property taxes in a timely fashion. And sadly, both the house that my husband has built and the property that's on and the other property that we purchased on Ligo Drive that tanked, uh, we purchased at one thirty-five and we're trying to sell it at forty-five thousand and we're not getting any rights. So we're already taking tremendous losses as it is and, uh, I'm sure you're probably aware of that. But, uh, for us, as I said, on the fixed incomes and with everything, I just, I don't know that we could really afford a financial burden to finish it and we would love to.
We didn't intend on that in two months, we wanted one house, turn that house over to make more, uh, uh, capital to, to build on the custom home. And, and when I broke ground, everything neighbor up to help me pour forty-nine yards, which I thought was perfect, you know, forty-nine in the country and everything, forty-nine yards of mud.
We have one more minute.
But thank you, this, just, just to finish up, this is Brad, you won't be able to finish the house because they'll be coming up every day asking how much you want to sell it for. And this was oh-seven, oh-eight. And that's, that became a, a total fallacy in, in.
Given, given the, the financial, I think the economy since that time.
There hasn't been another house, uh, that has broken ground all the way around since. Incredible.
So, thank you very much, uh, to anyone who was, thank you to all of you for hearing this, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much and I'm happy you, it looks like your surgery went well. So I'm happy to see that too, so thank you very much.
Yes. We are hoping to move to the second person, but unfortunately we're running out of time. Thank you for the online offer.
Thank you. Is there any other online public comment at the moment? Okay, at this time I will, I will stop. At this time I will close public comment. And I'll bring it back, Amy, I do have a question for you. So on the fifty percent, who came up with the fifty percent complete? Was that SCG with?
It was a wild guess on the part.
I have a question.
Yeah.
And it might be, I just was kinda, so I understand that the fees that they paid are in the first column. The second column is the fees that they would have paid in, in today's budget. And I understand how you came up with half of the mitigation fees. What about, are you saying that that third column, all of the total of the third column is the seventeen thousand, seven hundred?
Yes. Everything that they have not yet paid is seventy thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Everything else, the twelve, zero, one, five, twenty-one, they paid already. Those together come up to twenty-nine, eight, four, forty.
And I have a question, is this all based on the two hundred and fifty-seven thousand?
No, I don't get it. No, um, the only thing that's based upon the, that would be the building permit fees, that's why I came up with subject for a grade. But we're recommending that you charge the hourly rate for CSG, so that's actually an element. It would not be based on that.
Okay, and then there's also some fees in two thousand and twenty-two that are Z bros. So like plan check, because they already paid it, yeah, wouldn't be doing that again. The electrical, the mechanical, the plumbing, okay.
You got it.
And when you're saying we've all removed fees, that's because they've already paid those?
With the exception of. Yeah, basically. Yeah, no, basically I'm asking, oh, so waiver on the encouragement is the difference you're paying what it costs at the time and what it costs. You could put that back in. At the time, they pulled that from, it was one.
So based on what they said regarding a completion, the, uh, percentage of completion on the home at seventy-five percent, I just ran some quick numbers, that would be forty-four hundred and forty-seven dollars if that house is seventy-five percent complete.
Yeah, I, I think the issue on the, you know, the, the basis of the fifty percent is if anyone was coming in today, the mitigation fees are the mitigation fees. They're, they just, they are what they are, as opposed to other ones that may be, um, you know, the school fees or whatever. If, if, you know, and I think the problem is at the time that they originally pulled their permit, they weren't on the mitigation fees. Now they're not. And now there are. Twenty sixteen, by the city council at that time, and that we needed to find alternative sources of funding to mitigate the impacts of new building in the city that has on police, fire and roads. So that's what we would be hoping to be there for. So they never contemplated that they would ever have to pay mitigation fees when they originally pulled the permit, uh, in two thousand and six. The concern that I have and I completely appreciate, um, you know, within long throw, um, this, you know, in two thousand and, uh, seven, the permit technically expired. Um, there was a notice of no final inspection issued by a building individual in two thousand and twelve. We had a stop order, uh, stop work order in two thousand and seventeen, um, which then, you know, continues. And then, um, then there were complaints and now here we are. So at the end of the day, it's really just remaining, should they pay the mitigation fees or should they not pay mitigation fees? And if they're gonna pay the mitigation fees at what percentage or a hundred percent, um, should they pay the mitigation fees? Uh, all waiver of fees, required an alternative funding source, which means if we're going to make a waiver, then you're gonna cough up, um, general fund dollars to do it. So that's really what we're talking about.
So we would, this would go into the general fund, nothing comes out of the general fund?
Would have to go.
On the mitigation or on the, on the police department?
If you're gonna waive the fees, then we basically have to supplement those funds with general fund always. Um, other options, you know, because they were saying, well, they ended up selling it. Uh, if their issue is that they can't cough up with the, um, with the. their issue is that they can't cough up with the, with the sixty-eight hundred dollars plus this CSG hourly rate for the initial inspections that have to happen, you deserve to make a lien on the property for the mitigation fees, and if we sell it, we can do it that way. I'm just, you know, if, if the issue is they can't afford the mitigation fees to be final, that's a route, if they're not coughing up all the income, you would just have to determine what that money be. And the mitigation fees themselves, I believe all the mitigation fees actually go to special revenue funds for future investment into infrastructure. So it would actually be a draw on the general fund to their respective mitigation funds.
Even though it's already fifty percent complete, back?
They never paid it.
They paid some of these, they paid, they paid the.
They paid the mitigation fees.
Right, they paid the fees in two thousand and sixteen, or two thousand and six.
Not mitigation.
Not mitigation, because that came into play in two thousand and sixteen.
So if you, so right now, there is a total of thirteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty, that's mitigation fees. If you want to waive fifty percent, that other, the fifty percent you're going to waive has to come out of the general fund to pay those mitigation fees. If you want to waive all of them, then all thirteen thousand has to come out of the general fund to waive those mitigation fees. You want to waive seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent of that money has to come out of the general fund.
I guess I'm confused as to why that would have to be backed by the general fund.
Because you can't supplant, you can't, you can't have one rate payer pay it and another one not have to pay it.
But a new rate payer does not fifty percent of the whole part of the build and the whole destruction.
A new rate payer would have to be a hundred percent.
Right, but they're round that. This guy's already got, I don't know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out why we'd have to pull six thousand.
It's technically expired.
Right, they did. And so he's pulling a new permit on something fifty percent already, already built though.
It's a new permit, it's a new permit, plain and simple. So having said that.
Right.
For me, I'm really sorry for everything that you've endured, part of sitting in this seat and making our decisions, and from a non-emotional standpoint, hoping that I don't want to waive any fees and I, it's hard to leave it thus far, so.
For me, at the end of the day, the value of the home when it is final and complete would be equivalent to the value of a home that gets built at any point in time that had to pay the mitigation fees. So the fees have to be put in there in one way or another. I'm okay doing some sort of a fee, a lien to help them out to get it to completion, to put a lien on for the mitigation fees and getting paybacks at the time that they choose to sell the house, if that's a strategy, I'm okay with something like that to help them out. But unfortunately, I'm not able to say that we should waive those fees at this time.
Caroline? I'm for the fifty percent for the fees, the recommendation by staff.
I'm for recommendation for staff also.
So I have a question, so all of the houses that were built in two thousand and six, none of those people paid mitigation fees? And, and had these people, okay, I know, but let me finish, I'm sorry. So if all of those people had, if they did not pay mitigation fees, had these people finished their house, they would not have paid the mitigation fees either? And so then the general fund would neither have that money? Which is why the mitigation fees were approved by council, because the city could not continue funding subsidizing builds, basically, is what is known. So in the question that is being asked here is, is it the taxpayer's responsibility to subsidize the mitigation fees? Or that's the question that is being asked?
Yes.
And it is not the taxpayer's job to subsidize the fees of the house that's being built, unless, so that is my answer.
So, any other questions?
I would like to make a motion, if I can, to consider some sort of option to, or would anybody consider a lien to help them out so that they financially out of pocket can get this finalized, get this finished and get it, if they're intent to sell it, and then recuperate to the taxpayers via the form of a lien for the mitigation.
If there's something that can be, that can come out of, it doesn't sound like they're going to be moving to the house, so if they can, if they can pass that on to the buyer, then I would be willing to do that. But I'm, when the question is pre-phrase, then there is not a, to me, there's not an answer. That is, it's not the taxpayer's responsibility to subsidize. So unfortunately, I, I. But can we work with them yet, like if there's a way to come up with that?
And maybe we have to table that and come up with a strategy, or is that maybe we could decide tonight?
Well, you have to get direction.
Right.
So that's.
Well, you might want to pull.
So, does anybody want to make a motion on any of A, B, or C that is already tabled? Because we need a motion for something.
Well, I, my motion is A, with a mod, by, it's a variation of A because I would offer a payment option.
So, I'll do this, I'll make a motion to say they pay fifty percent in fact mitigation fee throughout the second.
So you're telling, I didn't.
I'm going to staff recommendation.
Caroline seconded.
Caroline seconded.
And I'm a no.
Well, so, okay, so let's take, we'll call the.
Mayor Brolia?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Herndon?
No.
Councilmember Tisornia?
No.
Councilmember Monacada?
No.
Okay, so that's a no.
So I would make the motion to go with option A, adding the fact that we would offer some sort of a lien payment option for the mitigation fees to help in our hardship.
I would second that. Councilmember Tisornia?
Is that enough to go on to write?
Is that word?
That's what makes sure that word, definitely. Perfect.
Councilmember Tisornia?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herndon?
Yes.
Mayor Brolia?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherala?
Yes.
Okay, so we will come up with some sort of a structure on addition of the property.
Thank you.
Sorry, give me one second, I'm going to write some notes. Okay, item C, discussion and approval of fee waiver for ACTA and all the costs associated with having Angel's Camp Christmas parade on December tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and approved resolution number twenty-two dash fifty-nine to approve the road closures for the parade and subsequent gathering activities. Correct?
Okay, so ACTA contacted us, they are interested in doing the Christmas parade in December, they have asked for a waiver of the costs associated with the Christmas parade. When they initially sent the special event application and had conversations with Alicia and Amy, it was mainly just, you know, having the parade route. Subsequent to this, there were conversations about potentially closing on Hardscrabble, which I'm not sure where that ended. So I assumed that it was probably going to include closing Hardscrabble in the calculation of these. So the assumption in terms of estimated cost was two thousand four hundred and five dollars. It seems just to be aware of what I came up with that did, because there would be the closure for Hardscrabble. The parade is after hour, so we would generate more overtime than if it was scheduled today. And then obviously, we're taking a guess here because, you know, we're assuming, we didn't, we haven't really had a meeting to discuss, like, how long the parade is going to be, how long Hardscrabble is going to be closed down for, and those types of things. So this is an estimate, it could be less, it could be more, I'm not really sure. But at the end of the day, they're asking for a waiver from council for fees associated with having the Christmas parade, is that right? And then also, just recall that council had presumed the sixty-five hundred dollars in additions associated with ACTA in, as part of the two thousand and twenty-three budget. And to date, the only thing that he had done in charge of the fee waivers for her was for the mortgage.
And the five twenty-five thirty-eight.
Sixty-five hundred was the budget.
Yep.
Correct. And that's where? Last questions?
It's not part of, come on up, well.
Actually, let, here, let's do this. Let me close this, open up the comment. Come on up.
Okay.
See Caroline nodding, so I'm assuming yes.
Yes.
So we appreciate your consideration of the fee waiver for the parade. It is part of the resolution that Hardscrabble may be closed from five to eight. We're planning to do like a little Santa's Village in the parking lot there and have a couple of food trucks, so some vendors and things. But we're not having a banner, and on your recommendation, it says, no banner, but decorations.
There was decorations, so.
What decorations would those be?
That's what we needed to follow back up with, and we talked, maybe sit down and talk about the.
Because it wouldn't be the ones that go across the road, because we all know, you know, the three that you put up every year across Main Street, those aren't ours. And we've done those every year, even when we didn't have a parade, so I wasn't sure. We're not doing a banner, and there won't be any other decorations. So that five twenty-five thirty-eight, here, come on.
Okay.
Cool.
So do you guys have any other questions about what we're doing?
Is that, so from five to eight is the closure, Hardscrabble?
No, well, that's just for Hardscrabble. And we're going to meet, we had talked, Jessica's in Disneyland right now, I don't know why, her priorities are so screwed up. She and I, we're going to meet with you and the police chief to talk about the road. But it should only be for about forty-five minutes tops, the actual highway road closure.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then you'll move into the parking lots down, downtown?
Then people go into the downtown area, we'll go back to the Catholic church.
So forty-nine will just be during the time of parade?
Right.
Or the time leading up, close it the time after?
And we're not doing a line up in association with this event this year, so it'll just be the parade. We're hoping that some businesses downtown will stay open for shoppers and maybe serve hot cocoa or something like that. We're working to have a stand in the location down there, okay, and visit, and that there won't be any decorations. We are doing the bows and bows again this year, we didn't do them last year, but the green area, we will hang all those up. We've got all that, don't make a mistake. Any other questions? And we hope we're going to write our quote, the same couple of quotes, so if you could come out and.
Our quote, okay.
What was the reason for the day change? It was supposed to be the Saturday.
I, I know. The thinking with some of the downtown businesses was that that Small Business Saturday, and it kind of took the focus off of Small Business Saturday, and they felt that they didn't take as much, so we agreed to try for this year to change it to this December tenth date. So it's pro, pro and con on that decision, we'll see how it goes. Any other questions for me?
Yeah, I, so I guess I'll jump in with my comments. I think I've been pretty vocal about giving away the free, we've done that for too long, and I don't want to do that anymore. So I guess two questions is, as the chairperson of the traditional mentor here, really start paying twenty-one hundred dollars, have we gotten business to sponsor that? So is that something that people have been doing to it all?
We're getting sponsorships.
But to, to pay for this?
To pay for the.
So the city's.
No, we're getting sponsorships to help pay for Santa, the candy canes, the, the bows and bows, all that kind of stuff. Our insurance, we're catering the insurance for this, which will be just under four hundred dollars. So, no.
And then I'm also curious if, if anyone's followed up with that department, Caroline, about the combining of the museum with ACTA, or excuse me, ACTA at, at the museum in order to save money and.
Well, that, that would probably be a discussion. I, I really feel comfortable discussing this in this, on this.
Right, I'm just curious.
But no, and that was kind of a miscommunication. But like I said, I don't think this is the appropriate place or form, but we can certainly talk about that and have you discuss it. I don't think this is the appropriate form for that.
Any other questions?
And we, you know, we pay for a share of the office, but just a share, and we do fundraisers and everything throughout the year, so.
Right, yeah, I know, I had asked for a copy of the financial back in June, but I mean, June's up and down, whole idea before, and I never did, so that's just why I'm curious.
Okay, well, Jessica is our treasurer, so I'm sure she would be happy to.
Any other questions?
How long's it been since we had the, I'm losing track. We didn't have it last year because of COVID.
We didn't, during the year before, two thousand and COVID, so.
So only COVID was the only reason why we lost the parade, or was it?
Right, because they weren't really encouraging people to gather on the street like that, so that's why we did the drive-through thing at the bank, and the elders.
So the last time we had a Christmas parade was in two thousand and nineteen? Nineteen.
I think it's going to be a great event, I think everyone is going to be very happy to participate. The downtown homecoming parade was fabulous, and people were so happy to be down there, the energy was, is just thick, and so I think it's going to be a really good event. So I'm glad that you brought that.
Are you also doing the, the light drive around anymore, or that's not happening this year?
That's not.
So, okay, that's why I was trying to get straight my mind.
Thank you, yeah. Any public comment out here? Any public comment online? So I'll bring back any more comment or questions from council?
So we removed, we removed the banner costs, we're like at eighteen hundred, is that over, something like that? And then what is it, actuals, after, after it's all said, then you sit down with Chief Alice, and then you sit down with figuring out the hard costs of everything?
And Alice and O'Neal.
Correct. So I have a question then, so we're eighteen hundred bucks, for a rough number. Now, let me kick that up, and we already approved sixty-five hundred, and we were talking about twenty-five hundred, so can I, can we make a motion to say, even though it would cost eighteen hundred, not to exceed the twenty-five hundred?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we've already approved that in the budget, it's budget neutral.
It's budgeted, yeah, up to sixty-five hundred.
Up to, right, we've already spent that, the thirty-four hundred and the five twenty-five, and we're estimating eighteen hundred, so we can budget it to the twenty-five hundred. I will make a motion unless there's more discussion.
No, I do just want to say I totally support tradition, I think this is a great tradition, but like I told High School, I would eventually like to see organizations that are asking for these waivers to come back in the future and not ask for these waivers and be covering up themselves.
And I have to agree with that, I think all these traditions are great, we're trying to help everybody get their feet back under them, after COVID especially, but like we told Brett Harge, and like Tyra offered, there's going to be a way to, there's got to be a way to be more financially sound, because our fees, our fees are our fees, we still have the hard costs that are associated with this. So I don't want to say like this is the last time for a fee waiver for me, but it's getting there.
Well, I guess some sort of analysis would have to be done too, and I don't know how you do this, because I do think this will generate tax revenue for the city, so, you know, you're giving, but then you're getting.
And I, and I have to agree with you to some degree, I mean, I don't want the city to have to put down the parade, we don't have, we don't.
You don't have a park parade.
We don't have.
Right.
So this is wonderful that you're taking this on, and this is wonderful that it's coming back after the two years of, you know, so thank you.
I'm excited, I think it's fun, I had a great time two years ago, and the drive-up, drive-around to council and the city was amazing, so thank you guys for that, too, to make work in the couple of years we are off, but I'm excited to have it back. So I'm all for approving up to twenty-five hundred dollars, having the money, it's already been budgeted, so I can make a motion for up to twenty-five hundred dollars, it's already been budgeted. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same side? Okay, item D, discussion and approval of contractor, contracting with HBL for YIFTE, Digital Gift Card Program Support Services, amendment fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three budget, to utilize the COVID state and local. to utilize the COVID state and local fiscal recovery for community support of $250,000 and increase the water capital projects to include $250,000 from cash carry for the Angels Creek Trail. Approved Resolution Number 22-64, increasing community support using the SRLF fund in the amount of $250,000.
Just slightly off the record? Yep. Just trying to follow up the presentation for this. So basically, just to kind of do a refresher, the city applied for and received at this point, nine hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars in federal funding from the COVID state and local fiscal recovery grant. At the time that the city applied for it, that's not what it was called. It was called ARPA, so American Rescue. So you'll hear it kind of run away, run around both ways. It depends on what channel you're involved in, but ARPA or SRLF. So cities and counties received this money. It was almost guaranteed that you were gonna get it, but you had to actually use an application for it. You had to do various paperwork and take it to your responsible authorities. You had to do various reporting for it to make sure that you get your second allotment. So we did get our second allotment this, this, this year. The initial discussion with council, we got wind, was to utilize the funds for three things. One was for essential pay for city employees. One was for COVID vaccine incentive pay. And then it was water and wastewater infrastructure projects. The intent originally for the money from grant funds from the feds was to pay for recovery efforts, water and wastewater infrastructure, broadband investment, those types of things. As time went on, I think the federal government is getting overwhelmed with the amount of federal grant funding that's out there. And so they remarkably loosened up the restrictions on the funds so that we can secure the governments to spend those funds on more creative ways. So for instance, Calders, okay, Calders County received like eight million dollars. I think that they budgeted to either for building an animal shelter and a different office. But when you look throughout the state of California and the nation, people are using it in all different types of ways. But the common strategy that cities and counties call it is to definitely utilize a portion of it for infrastructure projects that would include water, wastewater, broadband, but also the essential pay. But they're also utilizing it for recovery efforts, including economic development grants. So there's a bunch of different ways to do that. And what I have in front of me right now is to kind of change the way that we would be allocating this fund from being a hundred percent water and wastewater infrastructure funding to mostly water and wastewater infrastructure funding. And then we already have utilized a hundred thousand dollars for essential pay. And that would leave some room for us to do something different. If you recall, when we were going through all of our funds and the various accounts that we had out there, I came across a Kansas State account where there was a reserve of about $250,000 that was left over from the debt service bureau that we set up, the WAPA, to cover the debt service costs for paying that project off. Well, that project's been paid off for quite some time. That fund goes up to a certain amount. So there is really no basis of how you have reserve anymore. And when you look back at the origination of those funds, those monies came from the Capitol Water Fund. So my recommendation back then, just bring it back to your treasury, get it back to the Capitol Water Fund, problem solved. Well, then I started thinking, you know, this money for COVID relief is really some kind of creative funding that we generally. We weren't anticipating for our operations. Nobody really anticipated that we were gonna find $250,000 sitting in the Kansas State. And so what a better way to potentially help the businesses and the citizens within our city by utilizing $250,000 from the COVID relief funds because we can just swap the two fifty that we got from the Kansas State and we're gonna swap that to the Capitol Water Fund. Instead, just use that money out of the Capitol Water Fund to be for our water infrastructure project. And then use this $250,000 for economic development grants. So that's basically what the recommendation is here. The first program that I would say we need to go back is called, is a shop local program. HDL, the companies that I worked with for most of my career in government. They do a lot of work with local governments and cities and towns. And specifically, they coordinated with the company called GIFTY, who does the shop local program. So in terms of what shop local looks like, if you can go to the actual slideshow?
We'll have the slideshow.
Okay. All right. So go up.
Start here?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just go, just do it. Not your scroll bar, just the page down, like a, like a hero button. No? No, on your, on your. Okay. So other agencies that I've been able to find that are doing, using their ARPA money or their COVID relief money for shop local events. Twalney County did one last year, if you recall. They use companies of GIFTY, they use, they call them Rad Cards. So it's just, there's a bunch of different companies out there that provide shop local community cards. So Twalney County used a portion of their COVID relief money for a shop local event over there. The difference is Twalney County actually has staffing in the county that that does economic development and we don't. So they manage that entire shop local program. And so the Rad Card program was available, but it was actually Twalney County staff that facilitated that program. In our case, we don't have staff available to do this. Like HDL can actually support this program in coordination with GIFTY. Other agencies that have done a shop local event using their COVID relief money, local city, Antioch, Marietta, Hercules, San Antonio. And there's a lot of other ones that have done it as well. So resources for our recommended shop local program would be HDL Econ Solutions. They were established in 2014. They currently work with one hundred and sixty local governments in California, mostly cities. Twenty California cities with ARPA support services, so twenty different facilities that they're coordinating. On GIFTY, GIFTY was launched in 2012. They have mainly focused on local shops and restaurants. To date, they have worked on $28 million to local businesses using the community card programs. They have a partner with Mastercard. So when the community cards are used, it's just Mastercard is who manages it. And they also have a relationship with Nextdoor. So they have a lot of avenues for outreach that other providers didn't have. So the discussion. So I reached out to Jessica Johnson to talk about, you know, would ACBA, you know, would the business community here in the city, before we bring in council, say, hey, look at this great idea. Let them find out, let them know they really want it. Would ACBA have an interest in this? So she had reached out to ACBA and discussed what the program would be. I had shared with her the presentation information that I had received from HDL. And they had a myriad of questions in terms of, well, you know, what does this mean? Or what would that look like? Or how do you get the cards to kind of interworking for the program? And I responded and she said, yes, they would be interested. So the discussion was, you know, let's try to push this for holiday in 2022. Be as well, you know, hit the ground running and council approves it and get going. So HDL will utilize our city business license database. They will set up our GIFTY account. They'll create the graphics and all the outreach materials. And they do the regular monitoring of sales and usage so we know what's working, what's not working on a real-time basis. And then they will be the single point of contact for business owners. So if business owners are having issues or a new business wants to enroll in the program, they can help facilitate that. So how the community cards work, it's all digital. So you can buy a line for your friends, family, yourself. The redemption is powered by Mastercard using any point-of-sale system. The rollout takes four weeks. So from the moment we sign the contract, you're up and running in four weeks. It's free to merchants. The purchaser would pay $1 for the card plus five percent of the value. So just to give you an example, if you bought a hundred dollar card, you're gonna get a hundred dollar donation. It would cost the purchaser $111. And then HDL really would determine the merchants and only local merchants can participate. So the cards can only be used by businesses that have enrolled in the shop local program. And only businesses that are within the city limits can enroll in the shop local program.
Got it. When? Like you buy that card, it can be, it's, there's no expiration or it can be used anytime or just this season or are we out of the?
It can be, it's a, it's a one-year.
One-year expiration?
Yeah.
From the time of purchase, yeah.
So just in terms of metrics, so what HDL has seen and GIFTY has also seen the same information. You will see a two-time return on investment in the first month, four-time in three months, up to eight times in a year. The trend is twenty percent overspend on the cards. I buy a hundred dollar card, I get a hundred, I'm actually spending twenty percent more than the two hundred. Fifty-one percent of cardholders will try new places. So if you're restricted to only using the businesses within the city and say I get a card and I've never shopped at Crafty Chicks, which isn't true, I shop for all day. I might for the first time go and shop there. So it engages shoppers locally to shop in places that they haven't thought about shopping or eating places that they haven't eaten yet. And then ninety-two percent of cardholders prefer shop local cards over national brands. National brands mean Starbucks cards or Walmart cards or whatever. So program implementation ideas, it's really whatever we want to do. So we just have to determine, well, what do we want to do? So I would suggest making sure that the maximum amount of the grant is a hundred dollars per card. I wouldn't go anything over that. You don't want to have it be unlimited. So then someone comes in and buys a thousand dollar card, they get a thousand dollar donation. And then, you know, I think the most successful campaigns have been a buy one, get one where you spend twenty-five, you get twenty-five, you spend a hundred, you get a hundred. There's been other agencies who have tried, you know, spend fifty, get twenty or some, you know, all different things. And nothing quite works as well because of the buy one, get one. And then limits. Do we want to limit it to one card, two cards, three cards, four cards? I think Twalney County did a limit of four. Other places have done a limit of one, but I can tell you there's always a way around that. So it's not a hundred percent that no one's gonna not violate the limit, but they, you know, we can't put a limit on it. And then amounts can be anywhere from twenty-five to a hundred. You could, you could make it be, you could buy, you know, maximum twenty-five dollar card and you'd get twenty-five. Or you can make it a maximum of a hundred. Twalney County sold out in, do you remember? It was very fast.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Because there's a cap, there's a limit.
Well, we have to decide the amount that we want to invest in the program. And so my recommendation was do a $50,000 shop local event for the holidays. And that means once that $50,000 is voted for, there's nothing else. You just come for that, for that particular program. So Twalney County obviously received a lot more COVID relief money than Angels did. Calders County received eight million. We received nine hundred and forty-six thousand based on competition. So, you know, I think I'm comfortable with the two fifty because we found another $250,000 source that can be used to prove what we wanted to use it for. But I think that there's ever, I mean, programs, economic development programs and grants that we can utilize that two fifty for besides the shop local. But in terms of helping businesses immediately and getting them kind of in the swing of everything and kind of getting some relief, I think shop local now in this period is probably the best solution. And you get the most bang for your buck right now. And with that said, we would also want to make sure that we update the Capitol Product Water Fund because we did not miss any water line replacement in the budget. We had included all of the sewer projects, so it's been a boost away in Valdez, you know, with the strength. But we missed that water line replacement because we're still waiting on that grant funding for some of that. But I think at least getting us where we have that $250,000 year mark in this budget, that's a start. And then as we get confirmation on the grant over and then after the whole amount to come forward. So this is requesting an approval of a resolution for the budget amendment. It's asking for a budget adjustment and it's asking for approval for me to engage with HDL on the digital gift card program.
Any council questions?
Yes, I have a hundred.
I have a good answer.
So, okay, I'll go first. So you're proposing the $50,000. It's gonna cost us sixty-two, five hundred because the GIFTY company is gonna charge us twelve thousand and fifty dollars.
HDL will cost us $12,500.
Yeah, twelve thousand, right. Twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. And that $12,500 is coming out of the COVID money also?
Yes.
Okay.
So COVID relief can be used for all of the administrative costs associated with providing the unfolding our management or administrative offices in our program.
Okay. My other question is, I buy a gift card for a hundred dollars. I get a gift card for a hundred dollars, but it essentially costs me a hundred and ten dollars. So where is that other ten dollars going?
It's going to GIFTY.
They get that also.
No, it's two different people. HDL is getting $12,500. GIFTY is getting $11.
So when they come and use that at Crafty Chicks, that credit card, then Crafty Chicks has to pay the four percent? No, because that's what they're prepaying.
Crafty Chicks has nothing. You're gonna have your normal, whatever master purchase or you are running a credit card. That's all.
So that is, that is also that too. So there's another four percent coming out of that.
Well, if somebody uses a credit card, it's a pickle patch.
Yes.
It's a pickle porch.
It's a four percent charge.
It's associated with whatever that is.
So that doesn't add that part.
That doesn't come off that card. That's your operating cost for accepting a credit card.
This is just for a merchant?
This is just a credit card.
Okay.
It's just a credit card. For the purchaser, it's going to be a credit card that is gonna have $200 on it. When they buy the credit card, it's gonna cost them $111.
So it's not two $100, it's one $200?
One $200 card.
Okay. Sorry.
But one hundred of that is a donation coming from the city using our COVID relief funds. One hundred is coming from the digital computer card. And you need to pay the $11 and that $11 is gonna go to GIFTY. So it's. So, um, it's no different than Twalney County with the Grab cards. They have the same thing. They got charged $1, then you got charged 5%, that's about the other part.
And this is all COVID relief, so why would we do something like this except to, of course, generate income for the businesses? If we wanted to do something for our constituents, um, of, let's say, the city of Angels, why would we not give everybody a hundred dollars off their water bill?
Because we're trying to help businesses that are working from the office directly because of COVID. So businesses lost business, they lost customers. They weren't able to receive the benefits, they weren't able to acquire a product, they lost relief. So there wasn't a lot of relief directly for businesses. And you know, while you're doing a business, your relief was Paywall. Right? So you could get a Paywall relief so that you didn't have to shut down. Or you could take an SBA one, but it's not forgiven. There's still the interest on it and you're still gonna have to pay it back. This is the one solution where you can generate, um, sales. And the benefit to that business is you're gonna generate more sales than what we're investing into it. And the benefit to the city is that we're gonna generate more sales tax off of those sales. And then the long-term attacks that are, you know, now Crafty Chicks connected long-term to customers. Um, so it's trying to kind of put the dollar back into the economy. And, um, and I think that you, you do that better with the businesses in our area. And I think, you know, all the way around, we've heard a lot of complaints with the city dumping it out for businesses, um, this is a way to, to do that. And this is very in line with what a lot of the businesses are doing with our COVID relief funds. Um, and I think that, you know, this is probably one of the first programs in this city that, that has been provided, um, that's gonna directly help businesses in our area.
Okay, so first, first question, how, you're saying 50,000 would be the amount that we would tell them that we want to sell 50,000 in cards?
Yep.
And you, you came up with that number in agreement with ACTA? That's kind of a number that you backdoored somehow?
Well, I mean, because I think the benefit, so this money has to be expended by December of 2026.
Okay.
Sorry.
So real quick, while we're talking, where are we at with that? The 946,000, I feel like we've dipped into it a dozen times. Well, the essential pay, the vaccine.
That was $100.
Okay, the, the I T that we just spent the other day.
I T is not out of there.
That wasn't out of there?
No.
So we're down to, let's say, 800?
846,000.
Just checking on that. Then, my, my overall question is, why are we muddying the waters with the $250,000 of the found money when we have 800,000 for this? I, I feel that this is.
Because, because we have still these things for the city.
Why?
We have water and wastewater and wastewater products that we have to be taking. So.
With that ARPA money?
With money.
Okay, so we already had it earmarked?
We had it earmarked already. What I'm saying is, we found 250, that's just city here, doing that.
Right.
So we can take that 250 and, and do the same thing. Right? We're gonna do water line projects or whatever water construction projects that we need to do, which is why we're on water grant funded. Um, and then there is no other, like, if, if, if you came to me next year and said, hey, please let you do a shop local program, I would say, okay, how much G O T do you want me to take?
So you don't have 62.5 to take from the ARPA money? It's all earmarked without muddying the waters and taking the 250?
Yes.
That's, I understand that now. Um, okay. Where, you have to purchase these things online?
Yes.
But you get a physical card?
No, they're digital.
Are we, are we okay with that? Is our, are our people, I mean, I'm okay with it, I'm a paperless person, but I feel like this is like new age.
So Twalney County just did this all those years, so it's not new.
Well, how many people don't have email? Or I, or, you know, they're not savvy, they're not, I don't know. It's an older generation, people are not, okay. Those were my questions. Alvin, your other.
All right, go.
I asked the same questions you were. Oh, don't forget Carolyn.
Okay, Carolyn, go. If you have questions, please feel free.
Um, sure. One of my questions is, so if it's, it's a business that has to be located within city limits and they have to accept credit cards, correct? Correct. So that could mean contractors, that could mean people who, uh, work maybe not out of their homes, uh, but they have a business within city limits that accepts credit cards.
If they don't have a P O F.
They have to have a point of sale.
Yeah.
They have to have a business license.
Yeah.
Uh, they have to be somewhere where customers can shop.
Oh, so they do have to have a storefront? Some contractors, contractors wouldn't qualify?
I don't know who would want a $200 gift card to be a contractor.
Well, I mean, when you're buying, you know, if you're doing like landscaping, for example, um, and you do have $200, I mean, you know, it'll, it'll go through something. But, I mean, those are all businesses that also were affected by COVID, so that's why I'm asking.
What about like a massage therapist?
Yeah, right, right. Why not house workers, maybe they come to your house?
Okay, or a.
But she has to take credit cards. Just say credit cards. She has to enroll in the program.
P O S, not like you can use your credit card to vent.
Correct.
To be on the system.
Like a square. Square is very.
Oh.
Yeah, or like Costco, uh, uh, merchant services. You know, a lot of people have merchant services.
And, and the thing is, this, this is, this program is catered to what we want to see. So if you said, I only want businesses that have a storefront, then those would be the businesses that we would cater to. Those would be the businesses that we would select. If you said, I only want, you know, restaurants, such as only do restaurants. If you said, I only want to do it from downtown, it's only do.
It's, it's, it's however we want to, it's however we want to frame it.
Could they use their card to pay for their doctor's, or eye doctor exam or something?
And that's, no doctor is gonna sign up for that.
They have to sign up.
That's okay.
And it takes four weeks for this to kick off. You think there's time for us to sign up, four weeks, reach out to all the businesses, have them sign up and be ready for Christmas, or holidays, not just Christmas?
Home businesses are already in the know. Businesses are already in the know. So, I mean, we, I've talked to ACTA, they have their internal discussions. So, you know, the other part is HDL is gonna help us with the outreach. ACTA will help with the outreach. Um, there, we will have it on our website, it'll be on Facebook. It'll be, you know, we'll coordinate with whoever we need to coordinate to make sure that it's out there. Um, we want to see it be successful. But this is a proven program funding that just happened. I mean, I know people here that went over there and bought it for us, so.
It's kind of a cool thing, it's just blows your mind, I don't know if I trust it. I don't trust it.
Is there, is there, is there a way that we can do it where they actually get the card?
No.
Very much. Cause we're all girls too.
Right, it costs more for that card.
Is there any way to do this without touching the $250,000? Or can we put the money back? Because that money was earmarked for water wastewater. It got put into the money with our ARPA money.
It's all been to ARPA.
I know, but it, it was found, but it had intent before it was found. And the intent was to be.
The intent was to reserve it.
For water wastewater.
It was just to reserve it in the capital water fund. We weren't doing anything with that. We were just putting it back in the capital fund and letting it there.
But that happened when the J P A bought out.
No, that happened when I brought it to council two months ago.
Two months ago, we moved it, right, we moved it into, so, yeah, stepping in the wayback machine. That money was put into, that money was, to my knowledge, was put in there for when C C W, C C B, there was a loan against it. And we had to have a certain amount in there. And that $250,000 was our reserve, it was our safety bank, or safety. That now has been paid and done and that's all put to bet. Still, it's, and then we just, we moved it from mechanics to the wastewater wastewater. I don't know, so I'm gonna start now then. I don't know if I'm comfortable spending it for this. I'm comfortable spending it for water wastewater?
Well, this is, this is not, this is not wastewater money. What I'm saying is.
But it was water money, it was water money to start with. It was held.
Because no one could, and you're, 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 here is my, my issue. No one knew that that money was sitting there. Also, it was not clear how much money was actually sitting in water and how much money was sitting in wastewater. There is an incredible amount, honestly, of accumulated reserves that are sitting in waters and wastewater and mechanics bank and here and there.
Those two enterprise funds are sitting, I think.
All of them. And so had that all been known, I, I don't believe this ARPA money would have been earmarked 100% for water wastewater. There would have been other considerations. And when you look at what other cities have done and other counties, they're a whole plan. Like, there's a percentage that's for infrastructure, there's a percentage that's for, um, employees, there's a percentage that's for, um, economic development or business services, there's a percentage that's for all these different programs. And in our case, it was just take the whole amount, essential pay and water wastewater. That's it. But there was no other discussion about we can even deal with that besides that.
So, I, I don't know, I have trouble taking, so could we, can we take, I don't know, that $250,000? I mean, if we have a water year five and a water year five, we could use that $250,000 off? What's that?
Not for capital. But those are, those are, that's capital funding.
But where did that funding come from? That's, I want more information.
From the capital fund. That money that went into that U W P A came from the water capital fund, which I gotta kind of question why that happened. But it came from there and it went to mechanics bank, to the staff there. So we're putting this back to where it came from, which was the water capital. And what I'm saying is, use the water capital funds or a water capital project.
Okay, so.
Don't use, don't, don't.
I think what made ARPA.
So I, I'm game for this, I think it's absolutely.
You think it's this, this part? If you just look at this and take this out.
But she had to bring it in.
Right, I understand that, but once you understand that this is just a swap, just remove this from the equation and then you're just dealing with the COVID relief funds. And that's where the 62,000 dollars is coming from. It's not coming out of the, it's confusing because of the way that it represents.
Right, this is gonna take that 250 and use it for.
Essentially coming out of.
The water line. So, um, but we have plenty of money without the $250,000 to do that, correct?
No, you said it was all earmarked.
No, in our enterprise funds, not our, but I'm talking about in our capital water funds, we have plenty of money to do that project anyways, correct? So we don't need this $250,000 to subsidize that. So why can't we leave this $250,000 and just spend it out of the ARPA?
That's fine. Well, it's all there anyway. I'm just saying, we need to, I need to move $250,000 from the water capital to do the water line.
Replace.
I, I just, I need 250 from the capital.
Right, so why isn't, so that's, why isn't that a two separate item thing?
We could have.
So.
But I wanted to make sure, what was in, but what was in your head? What was in this entire council's head was 100% of ARPA except for essential pay was being used on water wastewater, 100%.
No, 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 you know.
Yeah. 846,000 dollars was all going into water wastewater programs, all of it.
Committed.
Committed, except for the essential, that's it. So I had to come here and go, oh, let's take the J P A for economic development.
Why are you asking for 250 when it's only 62.5?
62. That's the next item.
That's the next item too. So.
Let's see what the public.
So, I mean, for me, I'm all for this, I'm all for this. I don't want to do anything without $250,000 at the moment, which is kind of another subject in my opinion. I'm all for taking ARPA money and doing the 65,000 and doing a one-for-one, or 62.
62.5.
62.5 and doing a one-for-one with a three limit on the card. And I just want to make sure businesses, whether through ACTA, D A C, city, whoever, businesses enrolled in this is, is my main, is to get it, get that, get that information out there. And if we have to hire somebody to go do that too, then that's fine. I, I, I mean, it sounds like HDL is going to kind of push that too, but I think we need to get that information out to businesses, do that. And I would say, if you have a business license in the city, might not be a bad idea. I mean, if you can use three hundred dollar cards, um, that would be what? $600 you could spend with, I'm just gonna throw it out there, Lebono's landscaping and you could get some landscaping done. So I would, I would take the storefront off and I would just say, if you have a business license in the city of Angels and you can benefit anybody that way. Somebody with a mechanics job or whatever, or, you know, they have a mechanic shop out of their house. They don't have a storefront, but, so, that's just my, my thought.
Can you use this for gas?
If they sign.
If they're signed up.
Right, if they're signed up.
Okay. So my only concern about this whole thing being digital is I feel like it is alienating the older generation that possibly isn't as savvy, myself included, with all of the, you know, like, all this stuff. So is there a way that we could make sure they're included?
There is no provider of these programs that offers physical cards. I looked at every single one of them that I could find that can do a program like this. They're all physical cards.
I mean, can you.
Is this something where maybe ACTA could help them have a timeframe where they'd be available to have people stop by their place and help them get this on their phone?
Or the local library?
Alienating certain groups. Cause I can think of like my Volantire coffee group at Starbucks, they're gonna look at this going, we can't do this.
Tony's, I really can do it.
Yeah.
So, all right, so do we have any more questions? Carolyn, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm very sorry.
I'm on time.
Okay, any other questions real quick? We'll open up public comment here if that's okay?
No.
Okay, in-house first.
In the one second. Oh.
No, you two fight for it.
I'm ready.
Hey, May, um, I just wanna comment on the $250,000 that is in the first, um, out of the expression for the water and power. I would be cautious of moving that fund. Um, you're required by the J P A by law to keep a reserve of $250,000. When it's just going to be left to J P A, um, these entities were required to keep a reserve. That reserve, we found out in 2014, 15, and 16, the council did, did, um, quite that major a lot. So, um, over the course of many years, they've got back that $250,000 to make sure that they were probably, they're components of the J P A's on it.
So we have, we'll review that. That, um, entire agreement was specifically dependent on the debt service being placed. And U W P A actually holds the reserves now, not the individual U P U T or the city of Angels.
Then I again would caution the council of doing that, and that's a policy decision, and that's fine, but I was then cautioned because any after we were funding from the water sale, uh, we're supposed to increase the water reserves. So then when we did it, the higher water use, it could be applied to the water bill to help you, help the constraints with the water bill, but it went so high.
And we have those reserves actually in our U W P A, internal reserve within the city treasury?
Well, I still would caution because that is a lot of money. And after watching and spending $100,000 and took me on the sheet that you need for that and keeping that reserve, I know there's a lot of money in the enterprise fund, but it, it, you're going to find yourself in the someday unless you decide to get with the J P A at some time in the future. But in the meantime, I would caution. And I, I, I mean, that's a policy call at a high level with these W P A A Ds in the board, but, um, keeping those monies in a different, not keeping an eye on that, I, I don't know. Um, it's from pocket savings, it did not bode well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, there was some brief discussion, Jessica talked to Rebecca about ACTA, you know, kind of helping to facilitate getting the message out. But that would really be the limit. We would send it out to our membership and then we would also put it on our newsletter that we send out once a month, but there, I don't think we would be able to participate much more than that. Just kind of encouraging and supporting, but I just wanted to make sure that that was understood.
So Rebecca, sit down with the older folks and help them then buy a card out the door.
Probably.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Any other public comment in the room? Yeah.
Yeah, I have a question about HDL. Did they have an exclusive right or contract with this YF D program?
Uh, I, I'm not sure if they have an exclusive right. I just know that they are.
I just know that they are partnering with GIFTI. Um, but like I could go, I could work directly with GIFTI if I wanted to without HDL. We just don't have the staffing to be able to do that.
Yeah, I, I heard you say that about Tualami. They have staffing and we don't, I believe is exactly what you said. But you, according to, um, I thought DAC was that. I thought HDL, you would be contracting an outside person, help me understand this, to go to our local businesses to present this, to talk to them, to do what DAC has done for the city multiple times in the past.
HDL would?
No, he's saying he wants DAC to do what HDL would do.
Well, I'm wondering why DAC hasn't been asked. What, what, what does HDL offer that DAC could not?
HDL has ran these programs in multiple jurisdictions and agencies already. So, um, they already have a track record of knowing exactly what they need to do in that case. Where DAC ha, I mean, I'm not aware that DAC has put together a shop local program, um, dealing with federal funds and the programming and the reporting and everything that HDL would be doing for us. I think that's my bigger issue. And we're still, we still are on the hook for accountability on the funds in terms of how they're spent. So HDL does have that track record and that's just a limited subset of what we're asking them to do. We're not asking them to do anything other than that shop local program. That one run of the shop local program.
I would think that an organization has proven itself for the last 10 years with businesses in this community would be able to handle such a task. Um, for $12,500, you could also keep that local and use the public private partnership that you guys already had in place.
Public comment in the house. Anybody else?
I have a question on.
Name, please.
Lorena Hardy. I'm not a business owner, but I am a resident. Is this free, it sounds like this is free money. It's kind of bound. I'm alright with the businesses getting it also, but I'd have to see, it'd be nice if a, a percentage of it was set aside in a fund to help like the Christmas parade instead of them having to come up with this, the peace, the high school parade coming down. They, you guys could go in and say, well, no, we've got this money, we'll wait peace on this. Because the parade is kind of for the public, for us citizens. It's like, we enjoy it. We enjoyed the high school, it's fabulous that they even like to go come down Main Street this year. Fabulous. We went and sat on the porch and enjoyed it. The Christmas parade, we always love too. So it's like you're giving back to the community and saying thank you. So it's free money set aside, so we can still have some of this. I just wanted to say, put that out.
Thank you, Lauren.
You're welcome, Alvin.
Anybody else in the house?
Just, there's no such thing as free money.
I know.
That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Ben.
There'll be a doc somewhere.
Anybody else?
This cops feel some place.
No questions, someone?
Okay. Any other council questions? I have a bunch. I mean, I just, the $250,000 is its own thing. Can we out, can we reallocate part of that money? That, that, the 850 that has been dumped into the water sewer, can we reallocate that money? 100%, there's nothing. So we could, we could put aside at some point, okay.
You just, we have to have it obligated.
Yeah.
And then you have to have it spent by December.
And the obligation, the rules for that, we have a set of rules. Or are they getting more lenient?
They're getting more lenient. And so, um, but I would, it's, so you wanna think of it as one-time funding and want to come back much as other than cost. Uh, so you don't wanna spend it on anything that's gonna cause recurring liability to the city. And, uh, there is a, the oldie, it's called the 10% rule. So if we just opted to say, um, uh, that we're gonna utilize the funding to basically supplement our revenue losses during COVID as long as the, and, and they're not even really requiring us to prove that we lost $946,000, greater than $500,000 over the course of COVID. Um, but we could, um, you can use it literally for anything in general.
So if we wanted to give the business owners of downtown a paint credit to paint the front of their shops, that would essentially clean up downtown and enhance the look of downtown, we could essentially.
So that's the next item.
So, I would.
I remember when we were first receiving that money and we were just coming up with strategies and ideas, I kept saying, I wanna get back to the local businesses. I wanna get back in some form, however we can. Things were real tight at that time, not knowing the bells and whistles of this money. But we did involve DAC at that time to come up with a strategy and a game plan to how that might be, I think we were talking about grant money. Would they apply for grants or how? We didn't even know if the money was gonna come through or if it was gonna be real or how much we were gonna get. But we did try that strategy and that didn't work. We didn't, we didn't do anything. We didn't form anything. The money came back to us. Am I right?
That was a different.
That was a different.
That's not the ARPA money? What was that money?
That was a, that was a completely different thing.
But that was COVID money?
No, no.
Yeah.
No.
But, okay.
That was COVID money.
So. Back on the, or, back on this.
I have the impression there's COVID money, but that's the direction that we're gonna go with that.
Back on this, I would, I would like to make a motion to, this is gonna be weird. I wanna leave the $250,000 that was down with the mechanic bank alone and come back and touch on that on different bases. I would like to pull $250,000 out of the 846,000 we have left for economic development, which is what we're doing, correct? And I would also like to go ahead with the shop local program of the 67, 62, 500. I think that's everything. Does that make sense?
I will second that. Did you wanna pick a question?
I was just gonna say, I would also like to factor in what we brought up with the $250,000.
And, and we could, and let me do this too then. And I would really like to revisit the $600,000 that is left over.
Okay. Once we have more final costs on what these previous options cost, is that already?
That's fine. I, I, well, parade's anything, I'm just, we could put, um, what do you wanna call it? Community, community events. Community, yeah, how's that? Is that enough? Is that enough for a motion? Does that work? $250,000? I know.
Community plug support. It's basically.
Community support. So leave the 250 alone and we found, we will come back and visit that and see where we wanna do with it. Pull $250,000 out of the ARPA, which would still leave us 600,000.
646,000.
600, 646,000. You are such a hell. Now we'll leave that money there to come back and review how we want to spend that money and move forward with the spend local program through HDL.
Okay, can I say something? Um, I, I do agree with Tim and I do like the idea of trying to keep, keep the money within our own city. The administration fees always just blow me away. But, um, is that, I mean, is that something, Tim, that I can ask you? Can your?
I mean, we would love to look into it. I don't know anything.
My problem is that we're on a timeline, right?
All I, all I heard was Tualami has done it and they didn't hire somebody because they have staff. You technically have staff. You're just not utilizing them.
Um, at any rate, we're on a tight timeline to try to keep this covered. So HDL have proven track record of doing shop local, they coordinated with GIFTI. Um, I think in the short aspect of things, I think that's probably the thing that's true as way that we can be successful in this. Uh, and definitely on the next items, we could discuss about moving forward with other community support or involvement with DAC and ACBA and other.
So motion on the floor. Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say a sign. And yes. Yeah, you wrote in a note like a half an hour.
How are you doing? Well, I guess I'll see you Thursday in Copra Place.
Yes.
What's, uh, lecture asked?
Alvin's gonna give the lecture.
Yeah? What's he gonna talk about?
About the tel, telephone company and the tower family.
Oh, that'll be interesting.
Yeah. He works for him.
Yeah.
He is, and whatever, my older brother works for him and I think I married into him sometimes.
You should know that.
Cousins, they're cousins.
Yeah, you should know that. It's an awesome, that's a fair.
I have on there better because it's easier to understand. I have on there, they're connected. But it's back, it looks like. Uh, I'm gonna step back to item C because I actually did not say the resolution at the end for the Caltrans road approach permit. So I need to make another amendment, or let's make another motion to approve Resolution 2259.
Are you making a motion?
I, well, let me, let me, I'll open up the public comment real quick. Um, so I didn't make the motion to approve Resolution 2259. Is there anybody with any public comment on item C again? Okay, seeing that, yeah, I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2259 for ACBA for the Caltrans road approach permit.
I have a second.
It's okay, they're two different ones. Jen got it. It's too different. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, say a sign.
Just turn it back.
Okay, I'm pretty good. Sorry. Okay, item E, discussion and direction on economic development in the City of Angels. Rebecca.
Uh, okay. So, um, I think that given the COVID relief money, I think it's a great opportunity to look at economic development overall in the city. So historically, the city's engaged, as Tim had mentioned, with Destination Angels. Can't provide elements of economic development, yeah, also the business association and the calendar is responsible to pay off. Um, so there is always limited funding for economic development in, in city or county. Generally, it comes from discretionary funding. And in our case, most of our discretionary funding is used for operations. So, uh, very little money is available for.
Comments?
For economic development. With transient occupancy, uh, occupancy tax has been the main source of funding to promote various classes of business and tourism activities in the city. But again, a lot of our general operations is using the TOT, the sales tax and the property taxes. And counter to a common belief that the increase of the TOT is required to be spent on specific programs or elements of city operations, um, or funding various, um, nonprofits or, um, anything like that. The tax is a general tax, you know, the basis of the allocation, 100% depending on all the cost of the budget. So if you wanted to give it all to the state, you give it, if you don't wanna give it all to public works, you give it all to public works. There is no, um, defined requirement on the allocation of TOT. So the other thing to remember is TOT and sales tax are the most volatile revenue streams that we have. Um, and, uh, they can be directly impacted by consumer spending habits, economic uncertainty, um, that could cause slowdown in purchasing. And then when you're looking at fuel prices and inflation and speculation of a potential recession, all of those have the potential to, um, impact those two particular revenue streams. So the city should really always be looking at ways to invest in infrastructure or programs that can harness the current and future economic development potential so that we can help insulate ourselves to the future. Um, so I think that the city right now is in like the most remarkable and perfect position to capitalize on this momentum to do just that. When you think about downtown, so with the museum and the things that have happened at the museums under the movement of our poverty, um, where their, their, um, membership has skyrocketed. They're having more sales at the museum than they ever have before. Um, there is a lot of, uh, people from outside the city, outside the county, outside the city, outside the country that are helping that museum a destination. And then we've got the Angels Creek Trail Project. That is not just gonna be a city, um, trail project. That's gonna be a regional bike pedestrian trail. Now with the Utaq Park expansion, it's not just gonna be a city park, it's gonna be a regional park. All of those elements pull the entire vision of downtown together. Um, and then that really can become a really world-renowned destination. That's gonna bring visitors to our region and that's gonna support the stabilization of sales tax and TOT. So, um, the thing that we always have to think about and what we're always working on is investment in sewer and water infrastructure, progressing all those long-term circulation plans that we're always working on in the background, which seems like, you know, we might not be doing anything, but these things take decades to happen, uh, but we're working on it all the time. And then we're also aggressively always applying for grants to ensure that we can, um, grow competently and making sure that we're growing at a pace that the city's comfortable with, that the city can handle. So when we look at just the investments in terms of grant funding and donation funding that's gonna impact the downtown region, there's over $6.4 million in grant funding that's going to be used to improve that downtown corridor, which is pretty wonderful. And I think that that's going to impact in a very beneficial way the life of residents and forests. And it increases opportunities for economic development all the way around. So I think that the ARPA discussion, the COVID relief discussion of the $250,000, it just really, it, it complements all of the other investments that are happening in that area. So the shop local grant that the council just approved is just one of the facets of, um, programs that the city can invest in at this point, that have helped, um, helped develop that vision. So, um, so, you know, talking about economic development and, okay. Should've done it typically, but that's okay. So available funding, so we've got the TOT, the sales tax, property taxes. We've got grant funds and franchise fees. Those are really our discretionary, discretionary funding costs. In terms of historical funding levels, um, between 21, 22 and 2021, um, you can see, you know, TOT kind of volatile, um, property taxes is actually the least volatile, um, source of funding that we have. Um, reverse to discretionary, sales tax, volatile, franchise fees kind of stays low for the next year. Above then, and you can't see that one at all. So when you, when you think about the general funding store. So when you, when you think about the general fund, the store use of discretionary funding, the top is police, where most of our discretionary funding goes, followed by fire, followed by building planning, and not so much the building side, planning side for sure. Planning does not pay for itself. And you're, should it, and only doesn't anywhere. And followed by community support. The city does give a lot of money to community support. Think of the CBB, we've historically given quite a bit to Destination Angels Camp. We also, you know, paying for the museum. And then public works is after that, and then administration and finance. So the historic community support uses, we contribute money to Central Sierra, the Calders' Letters Bureau, the museum, Destination Angels Camp, and ACBA. And those have really been the facets of economic development. And whatever definition you want to get it, that's where we have looked for economic development in the city. So this new funding source, you can call it ARPA, you can call it state local fiscal recovery funds, but we received just under a million. We had initially aligned it mostly with water and wastewater profit funding, and so I had recommended 250 for city-funded economic development grants, which the council just approved. The next one? Yeah, we're not going to be able to move it all. So, um, so my recommendation is to, was first and foremost, like, get the Shop Local out the door. Take four weeks to do that, and then we can get businesses focused on that, and then they have something to plan for. And then we can work with HDL in terms of the market and know that one. But the other component of this is we really need an economic development action plan. Because I think at this point historically, what I've seen, when I go back to all the documents and agreements, is it's, you know, Destination Angels Camp might do this, and ACBA might do that, and CD might be doing this. And nothing necessarily is actionable from the perspective of the city. So we're allocating funds, and we're trusting them to do whatever it is that they're going to do with those funds. But it doesn't necessarily come back to an actionable item that we play a part in. So I think developing an economic development action plan, those would constitute as actionable items, that then we can work with Destination Angels Camp to say, here's the three components that we want to fund this year. And ACBA, here is the, here are the pieces of business outreach that align with this action plan that we could contribute efforts on. We can work with CBB to say, these are the actual items from our action plan that we want to make sure that you're including in your marketing efforts with the money that we put in for the, you know, their marketing, whether it's online or radio, or through their print. And then, what did I say? Okay, so then we have the Shop Local grants, which we talked about, business improvement grants, which we'll go over in a second, business expansion grants. And then that all is going to involve discussions and align with work efforts that Destination Angels Camp can do, ACBA can support. And then ultimately, what happens is that all creates an increased tax basis for us. And these are not the, you know, so investments into business and business activities and grants don't just help the businesses, it ultimately starts stabilizing our revenue streams for the TOT and sales tax. And it gives us a lot more control on that. So in terms of Shop Local, we talked about this. We brand our webpage to sell them online, we invite local businesses to participate for free. The first event will be for 2022 holiday. And then we'll have to determine, you know, what's the next wave? It's going to be dependent on how the first wave went. And, you know, are we going to do two more events, or are we going to do three events? Or are we just going to say, you know what, let's just do one big event next, and let's do it on such and such period? And we're really going to look to the business community to determine what it does for them, because they're going to see that the, whether this first wave was the right size or the right timing or not. Your connection is not good, so I'm not going to watch the video. But anyhow, we'll have this online as well, so if you wanted to watch the video, you can. But it's basically just interviews from people that have participated in Shop Local programs. So when I talk about business expansion grants, this is an idea that I've seen other agencies use their COVID relief monies for. And so the question is, again, this is catered to however council wants to do it, or do it at all. But would we want to have grants available for new businesses, or only existing businesses, to allow them to expand, to purchase newer replacement equipment, leasehold improvements, storage and display purchases, or maybe some planned incentive bonuses for retention and attraction? So all of these things play into the fact that, you know, businesses were not able to expand because they lost sales during COVID. Businesses were unable to open because maybe they were going to open right before COVID hit, and then they said, never mind that opening right now, I'm going to hold off. Or they weren't able to replace equipment, or they weren't able to do leasehold improvements because they had a reduction in revenue and sales. And so they didn't have the revenues in order to support expanding their businesses. So if we wanted to see expansion happen or traction in new businesses, grants that would support that would be something we want to look at. Business improvement grants, this is also something that several agencies are doing. When I first got here, a lot, and I continue to stay and continue to hear it, a lot of people were told there's a bunch of code violations in the area, and there are code violations associated with businesses. But I think instead of, you know, kind of doing the hammer approach, maybe it's a matter of they were impacted by COVID, and they weren't able to paint the front of their building. They weren't able to put up their correct signage. They weren't able to do the things that they needed to do, and now they're not compliant with the rules and regulations associated with the city. And so, you know, what, what some agencies are doing is actually using some of their COVID relief funds for code violations. So we know we have businesses with signage issues, we have building issues, we have debris issues, we have security issues. So we think of all the different facets that this may be meaning downtown not look as great as we hope to look. And you have businesses that really can't invest anymore in those businesses because of the impacts related to the pandemic and the reduction in sales or loss of employees. This might be something we would want to look at as well. So other agencies that have used ARPA funds specifically for code-type grants and economic development, Monterey County did economic development grants, City of Fresno, same thing, San Antonio, same thing. And they also did some stabilization. City of Roseville did community grants for $1 million. They focused on neighborhood and physical requirements, food, health and wellness, community and social context, and education. City of Series, just under $500,000 specifically towards code, code violations and code enforcement. So they did that by adding staff, so not only code enforcement, but law enforcement for a period of two years. They are mainly focusing on illegal dumping, unpermitted vendors, unauthorized camping, unauthorized business activities, property maintenance standards, zoning violations. And like I said, it's a two-year investment, totally $480,000 is what they're contributing of their relief funds. Just to give you ideas. And then priority of grants. So whatever we do, it's no different than the Shop Local. We're limited on the amount of money that we want to contribute to it. So the grants would be limited. I would say priority, really, Shop Local and business improvement grants should be the priority for some of the others. We need to make sure we're supporting the businesses that we have. But I also want to make sure we're supporting businesses that are not compliant with our current rules, so that they can kind of find a way forward. And then if there's sufficient funding, after taking care of those two things, looking at business expansion grants. And those evaluations will occur after business improvement. So grant size to businesses, I've seen everything from, based the grant size on the annual gross revenue from 2019, 2020, 2021. I've seen it based on the business area that the council or the board wants to focus on. So some areas focused, you know, in a particular business area, you know, maybe you want to look at just downtown, or maybe you want to say everything within the city limits. And then in terms of looking at the grants or the applications that we would get if we went through with this, it would be based on, you know, would we base it on their business plan? Would we base it on their projected annual sales, the number of employees that they're stating that they would have on the business type? You know, if we've already got, you know, 10 of a certain type of business, do we want to have an 11th? Or do we want to look at a new type of business that we're hearing we're lacking? And then do we want to say, okay, well, is the competitiveness, are their projecting their sales would be higher than X dollar amount? One to three employees, four to 10, 10 plus? Do we want to focus on services, sales, food, businesses not currently represented? And so in terms of the next steps, I would suggest having a grant review committee that doesn't necessarily have to be council members, it could be staff. It could be staff and someone from Destination Angels Camp, it could be someone from the Angels Business Association, whatever council really wants to include in the committee. We would, I would also recommend, you know, depending on the size of grants that council is looking at, have grants, grant awards under $5,000, have that approved by me, instead of having to bring them all to council. But if it's over $5,000, have those approved by said council. We would need to develop a grant policy and budget for council improvement. We'd need to develop an application and website page and portal for submission of applications. And that's it. So there's a lot of different ways that we can facilitate economic development by engaging with businesses. We can fix some issues that we're seeing out there by utilizing some of those COVID relief money, and also facilitating expansion. So there are a multitude of ways that we can do it, but it's just a matter of what is helpful, what is helpful.
Caroline, let's open it with you, see if you've got any questions first.
So one of the, you know, big things that we face as an issue for Angels Camp is downtown and so many vacant spots that it's just are not rented for whatever reason. And it's really disheartening to see whether, you know, a new business open, or two businesses open, and then one close, or, you know, there's not rented spaces. One of the things that I'd love to see is some focus to downtown. It is, it has a lot of potential, it's got a lot of, a lot of issues right now. And the facade that was done years ago are showing wear, the awnings are showing a lot of crustacean from years of not being power washed. The trees need trimming. And then I don't know if there's an incentive program that we could maybe use to encourage these, these building owners to rent to potential businesses, and use some of this funding to say we could guarantee, you know, the deposit or first month's rent. Those are just things that I'm thinking off the cuff. But the downtown definitely needs some love and care and attention, for sure. As far as, let's see, the grants and things that go, I do love the idea of a committee, and I do think it should include ACBA and DAC, and I'd love to see that incorporated, maybe with one council member and a staff, just to get some, some good, different perspectives and things like that on a committee. But that's really, and I think as far as outreach on underrepresented businesses, we are in desperate need of restaurants. I mean, breakfast places, this is what I'm hearing all the time. I love you, Gretel, you're busy all the time, but we really need our commercial kitchens in this town. So those are the, those are just my thoughts off the cuff.
Thanks, Caroline. All right. Council member, staff, what do you have to go?
I just have a couple of questions. So how much money are we talking about in this, in this program? Because we're looking at a lot of time, a lot of investment, a lot of energy, a lot of outreach. I mean, how much money are we talking here?
Well, we just approved $62,500, so we are left with $187,500. Across Shop Local events, business improvement, grants, and business expansion grants.
Just develop a three-year, sorry?
No.
Just develop a three-year economic strategy. What is, do we have to look at the cost of the?
And that's, that is important for a long-term plan.
Yeah, I was looking at the action plan as to what that even entails, because that's the, that's the long-term role. We do have, we have to, you know, tie in with what our strategic plan can reveal. It sounds like we're testing the waters with the Shop Local incentive, so that's a positive. I just, I don't know how to do, what to do with the rest of that, or if we should do anything at this very, very moment. But they're all great ideas, and I get, everything that Caroline said too, I could agree wholeheartedly, and that's them. So the code violations and the citations are important as well, because you have to have that pride of ownership to attract new business. But we have to crack the code, we have to figure out how to get more restaurants and more vacancies filled.
So I think some of that is going to come from developing that action plan. And so my suggestion is to, to open it up and to get responses for a three-year action plan. And then bring, you know, bring, bring that back to council to, you know, approve a contract and go in that direction. But whoever, you know, depending on whoever supports, so it would be the same as we put out, you know, facility, that visual contract, or the engineering contract, or the whatever. So how would internal review community score, you know, the responses based on the request for local? And then we bring the recommendation back to council to, to the local contract or?
So what timeline are you looking at?
I think the sooner the better, because at this point, we're guessing what needs to happen. And we know there's code issues in downtown. We know that there is, there are improvements that need to be done in downtown. We're in charge of the trees, so that's only one, I just know the nature of the trees. But we don't own a lot of what's downtown that people are seeing. So those would have to be grants, coordinating with the commercial properties. There are too many of those improvements, identifying what, you know, on what level of granting would be necessary to help facilitate that. But the economic development action plan itself helps us have a framework in terms of, you know, whether we want to see Destination Angels Camp do, or ACBA, or CBB do, or what types of businesses do we want to make sure we're attracting? And it also helps us ensure that we're on the right path in terms of planning. So that's kind of the piece that we're missing right now. And all of this money has to be spent by 2026 and there's no additional subsidy. This money's guarded costs. So.
Okay. So for me, I got a little bit different maybe, I don't know. I think this is a great idea. I think it's something that needs to happen. I think this with, we have to hold off, in my opinion, we have to hold off on the City Gate to see what they come up with. When there's our strategic, strategic planning, ACBA, DAC, the county, we need to kind of see what they're planning and what they're doing and get the input with them, whether we sit down with them and have a discussion about this. The museum, there's a lot of people that we need to get their input on and it's a big project and a lot of information to put together. And it's not, in my opinion, it's not going to happen very quickly and I don't want to spend the money just really newly. I want to find out what the business community wants, what we want, what people are saying. So there's my input for a second. Okay. Anybody else for a second before we open a public comment? Public comment, in-house first. Captain Russell.
So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. You're talking about hiring a consultant to develop this plan. So it would be something done in-house.
Yep.
It would be a consultant that would be hired to develop a long-term economic development plan?
Action plan.
Action plan. And that, this money would be used to hire that consultant? And that wouldn't be something that City Gate already did?
No. They're working on the strategic plan.
Well, I would just caution, you know, just as a taxpayer, I've seen this happen before. I remember years ago when I was at Ironstone, Steven Calvert, and I came to this room and we, there was a presentation and a consultant had been hired and it was to determine the demographics of the people that shop in Angels Camp. And it was amazing. I was like fascinated because it's like mostly people who are saccharinero that are age 55 and have a poodle and drive us off. You know, and we're just like, wow, this is incredible. But then as an afterthought, they kind of mentioned that this was only people that used Visa credit cards. So this, that, all that data was only based on people using Visa credit cards, not, you know, not Mastercard or Discover and things. I'm like, well, how accurate could that data be? And I paid a lot of money to get that. And what seemed fascinating in the beginning to me seemed kind of not very valid when you're not looking at all of the shoppers and all of the, you know, so how do you, how do you use that information? So it was kind of worthless, but they spent a lot of money to get it. So I just caution you, you know, and I was on the school for it for a long time. And I remember we went to one, it was in 1995. All the districts in the county had pooled their money and had these consultants come in. And by the year 2000, Coswellopolis was going to exceed Angels Camp in population. And we bought property down there, built a school and a high school. You know, oh my God, we've got to be ready for this growth. And it never happened. But we paid a ton of money to these consultants. And you don't ditch your money back when the, when the data they provide you isn't valid. So anyway.
Thank you.
Very thank you.
Mr. Ben, you're standing up a second.
Yes.
If I'm allowed, come on up.
Okay. You know, using that money, that $187, that's your policy call and everything. You do have partners out there. Alvin last year and the, I think the year prior, you're on Central Sierra Economic Development District. You know, when you're talking about your strategy and moving forward, we are moving forward with our sets, our comprehensive economic development strategy for the five county area. These, when you go for more grants, the, this is something that is required for you to move forward. So you don't necessarily need to come up with one. We can facilitate that using Central Sierra Economic Development District as you move forward. So that might save you a little bit of work of bringing someone else in to do that work later, if that's your choice. Now, to go on with money coming down the pipe. There is a lot of money coming down the pipe through Central Sierra Economic Development District. So, you know, it's languished for years. It hasn't done much, but this year we were having meetings consistently. Right now, the cert funds are coming through. We've contracted with Sierra Business Council. So we have our, our, we have our application in for the planning grant, which is for the eastern Sierra area, which entails five, seven counties. It's everybody in Central Sierra Economic Development District and also including Minyo and Mono Counties, which is kind of odd that they got lumped in together. But that's, that's a whole other conversation. So the COVID economic relief fund starts out with a $6 million block grant for planning. At that point, we go through that, that, which this should be coming somewhere in the, we're guessing at the end of, somewhere in November. It was supposed to come sooner. But a lot of the urban areas are arguing over who gets what and everything. But we, in our rural area, have really cooperated. We've come together under Sierra Business Council and we have our grant in. We're just waiting for the yes because we're the only people that put it in for this area. So we're going to get, right? So we go through this down the road. Most likely, a majority of the money is, you know, delegated by the state. But majority of this money is going to be delivered to everyone in our area based mostly on population. There will be a few other factors, but you know, Tuolumne County and Calvers County will get the most. We're partners with Angels Camp. So what I'm asking is that as we move forward into November, we, you know, the state will, you know, hurry up, get your application and wait for us. It's typical. But I would like the council to possibly come in, sit with the board of supervisors at the same time, get updates from Sierra Business Council on this. And then that way, you know, as we move forward, it's in our best interest to keep our, aligned on how we move forward with this. That way, you know, there's no question on the state on how, how we're going to utilize this money. We're the, Sierra Business Council did a statement. So in the comments as they were putting all this together, we're asked, because generally on population, but it's like $800 million over the whole state from these cert funds. We're asking that the Sierra, the eastern Sierra region get at least $45 million. You know, which, you know, can be fairly substantial, you know? You know, somewhere in the vicinity of $7 million plus for Calvers County is what my guess is. You know, plus, you know, which, you know, that's a thousand feet of underground pipe. Doesn't go far. You know, it's, it's more than we have. And you know what? Angels Camp, of course, will get their, get their share. And this could go, you know, down the road because this is years rolling. You could continue to do your downtown project or wherever you decide to at that time. I would love for you all to consider sitting down with us and getting an update from Sierra Business Council sometime in November. That's, that's my ask.
Are they, are they doing a presentation?
I'm always on with them constantly. They're, they're going around and they're doing presentations. He said coordinate with Angels Camp. It's always best if we align our goals. And then at that point.
So do you have a schedule of a presentation?
I haven't scheduled one yet. I talked to them about it. I want to talk to you all about it, see if you're, if you have appetite for it.
They did the same thing. And so, and I said, absolutely. We definitely want to do that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I asked them to reach out also, but you know, we didn't, I didn't, I didn't iron out any dates because I want to coordinate and partner. Right?
Thank you. Thank you, Ben.
And just to follow up on what Ben's talking about. So a lot of that is going to be, so the initial funding is for planning. And then that planning would play into a lot of infrastructure funding that aligns with kind of what that plan is talking about. So, and I have been involved in those conversations as well. So talking about kind of what some of our limitations are in the city in terms of the infrastructure programs, water and wastewater expansion. We have, you know, limitation, we just don't have, you know, a ton of businesses here. Definitely, as all of Calvers County had a difficult time recovering from the recession and then recovering from COVID. And so something, you know, that I said, that I recognized in living here is it seems like other jurisdictions seem to kind of come out of it a little bit better than we do. And we seem to like lose ground and come back a little bit, but not as far as where we came from. And so that does seem to be an issue that residents and businesses continue to have to deal with. So I did have that conversation with them. So it's still kind of in the planning and working phases, but we're definitely involved in that.
Any other public comment in the house? Rose, online? Any other discussion here, questions?
So, so, you know, definitely this is just kind of mainly a, kind of there's things that other jurisdictions are doing with their public relief funds. It's things to keep in the back of your head in terms of moving forward and options that are out there for you. I definitely agree, you know, we need to, you know, make sure that we're aligned with Citygate and making sure we're not due to any efforts there or getting on a different leash than that. But it is, it is a component of that strategic plan that we're going to definitely need to take into consideration. So for now, we're finding just to continue running and then kind of move on.
I think that's kind of where I'm at. Like that City Gate, we've got the potential for aligning with the county in November and getting some updates there. I don't know that we need to make any rash decisions for the $187.
As long as we know the roadmap works.
Run a timeline and then we can come up with some bullet point items or definite job-specific items that we want done. We can send that out to Ben, to whoever. And then they can come back and say, we can do this one, this one, this one, this one, or this price. Is what we're at, correct?
Well, I mean, yes, but in order to kind of put stuff together, we need to have actual items.
Right, that's what I mean. It means we specific jobs, right? And it just not come up, there weren't, yeah.
We need to gather the information from the other entities that we have coming before we're making decisions on this idea.
Oh, so do I, 100%. But actually give, this is job one, this is job two. Jobs that we can get reports on and say this job, a big check mark in front of it, we spent this much. Anything else on item B? Public comment I did. Move on to item F.
Okay, so there's been some asks in terms of what the status of the fire tax measure is, what the impact would be on the city, and is that city council that probably can come out. So measure A, which is the fire tax, it did receive sufficient signatures to be on the November election. It would add chapter 3.57 to the Calvers County quota or coordinances. It would be able to get a one cent transaction, which basically means a 1% increase in sales tax. So the city was included in the tax measure. And so the city is, fire is included in the total of the 10 agencies. So there's nine fire districts throughout the city and then the city has the Angels Fire.
So the Angels Fire is in the GPA?
No.
In this tax measure?
It's not in the GPA.
Sorry. Yes, yes.
Apple is in the GPA.
But this is, this would affect everything.
So this impacts every single fire district and the city for the sales tax.
Is that what's passing it?
Yes.
Okay, that's okay.
Every single.
Every single, okay.
So, so the basis of the measure was that most fire agencies in Calvers County put on income by law, which is true. And they all have a very low rate of pay because the law is strict. The, there's difficulty in retaining those staff. And the other, you know, thing to consider is that cores make up most of the impacts on these agencies, which is, is very accurate. So if measure A passes, all of the Calvers, all the Calvers County included city Angels would have an additional 1% tax rate on tangible personal property at retail. The fund would be established at the county of Calvers. It would be administered by the county auditor. And so it's going to be referred to as the Calvers Local Fire Protection Account. So, you know, if you look at the measure of the total funds that are, that get received from that tax measure should have passed, it has a provision in it that says no more than 30% can be used to include or replace equipment facilities, which means the basis was not specifically for hardware equipment or certain approaches. It was mainly for staffing incentives, training, stipends, compensation, personal protective equipment and some office and professional costs for off-mannered apparel service and property services. But no more than 5% can be paid for that administrative component. Of the funds that the city receives, 69% would be divided evenly among the 10 agencies, the city being one of them. 1% would go directly to the San Andreas Heart Protection District. They protect non-taxpaying properties. So there are government consented properties that they're protecting that are in jurisdiction, such as the government center, jail, warehouse, hospital, and so on. And then 30% shall be proportionately allocated to each agency based on their share of county population. So each year by June 1st, the agency would have to provide a response improvement plan and a budget detailing how they would use the revenue that are coming here. And then should that measure pass, we have 30 days to submit those plans for the remainder of this fiscal year. And then each agency may provide within that plan to retain up to 10% of the funds as cash carry. And then there's various provisions, should the revenue exceed 110% of the estimated amount. So there's going to be an estimate that's going to be provided and that each agency would base their plan on that estimate. Within the provision of the measure, each agency will have their appropriations limit increased. So we generally call it the M limit, the appropriations limit. So it's the amount that the entity could spend of tax revenues. And this increase will be in effect so long as the county holds an election every four years, making it possible for all the agencies to spend the revenue from the tax. So based on the initial estimates, and you have to remember when these estimates were done, it was kind of a lower basis of tax. It's been the last few years we've seen skyrocketing amount for sales tax. But I guess it's going to come back down because a lot of that was during COVID and everybody was staying out of their houses. And so based on the past sales tax trends, the amount that the city of Angels would see would be about $528 if you have it. So the Calvers County auditor was asked to provide a fiscal tax statement. And so I put that in here. It just kind of is a factual statement and that the revenues and expenditures depend on many factors. It's estimated that, you know, for the partners' cost would be about $42,000, that would be tons. And the impact of revenue in the county is not entirely known. It's dependent on consumer spending. And it's uncertain if the increase in sales tax due to the measure would impact consumer spending, would impact consumer spending. So in terms of our impacts, the current sales tax rate in the city is 7.75. 7.25 is, is the state rate of the, of the common rate. 6% of that amount is specifically for the state. 0.25 goes to the county and 1% goes to the city. And then the city increased the sales tax by 0.5 in April 2015. So should measure A pass, the city new sales tax rate would be 8.75. So should Measure A pass, the city new sales tax rate would be eight point seven five. And our unincorporated areas would be eight point two five. Legally, city would not be restricted from proposing new sales tax initiative because the M limit or the appropriations limit would be increased as part of that measure. And then also this measure would be the same requirement. It's legitimately, the city would be probably, it would be very unlikely to be successful with another tax initiative. If we're at eight point seven five trying to pass another tax initiative, it's going to be pretty difficult if not possible. Because at that point, we would be pushed up at nine percent or above. The other thing just to be aware of is that currently, Tuolumne County tax rate is seven point two five. The city of Sonora is seven point seven five, same as us. Tuolumne County is currently pushing a tax initiative. I didn't include that in here that they are. It doesn't sound like that's likely to, it doesn't have a, well, but, um, Tuolumne over there.
Tuolumne County.
Tuolumne County. And then the city of Sonora is also, has a measure on the ballot to increase their sales tax to be, and that's about the same as us. The Tuolumne County one is not a general tax, it's a special tax. Those are harder to get passed.
Two thirds.
What is it for? I think it's specifically for police and road. I don't think that's what it's for. But it's, it's specific, so a little more harder to get approved. So I'm not sure, people I've talked to, they don't, you know, succeed in succeeding, but you know. City of Sonora is a general tax measure, so it's just, it's not specific. And so just, just kind of, you know, like, first of all, because we don't know. So if the, if Sonora succeeds, their tax rate would be very similar to Calaveras of the City of Angels. And it would mitigate the, the idea that consumer behavior or concern causing revenue bleed outside the county. So if, if our tax rate is eight point seven five and the city of Sonora is eight point seven five, why would you pay the tax or why would you pay the fuel to the market, right? Just shop here if you didn't think you could find it. However, if Sonora's measure fails and Calaveras' measure passes, I don't know. Because at that point, there's a one to one and a half percent savings in sales tax if you left the county and the city. Most people are going, oh, who's going to care about one percent or one and a half percent? On toothpaste, probably not. On a refrigerator, you might. And if you're doing a lot of construction and you're going to buy your materials in county, it might. But it might not, I don't know, just a while. So, so the financial impact is unknown. Sales tax is derived from available shopping opportunities and consumer behavior. And so depending on the outcome of the Calaveras and Tuolumne elections, it could be an increase to the City of Angels for fire. If Calaveras passes and Tuolumne fails, it could be a decrease in the city's general tax, which we use for overall operations. So I don't know, no one knows until the election passes.
It has to get two thirds now. It just has to get fifty-one.
But that's, that's it. So, I mean, these are the facts of the measure, that's what the impacts would be.
Any questions?
Maybe, go ahead.
All right, so. So question would be is we would receive for City of Angels, fire department, five hundred twenty-eight thousand?
Roughly, yeah.
Roughly, for rough numbers and we'll talk, I know you'll like rough numbers, you like exact numbers. And for roughly, I think, if I'm not mistaken, fire receives how much every year out of the budget? Is it five hundred-ish?
Well, they receive various money sources.
I know.
So, so I believe it's about, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's a third of the increase of the new TOT, which I think has been falling around one hundred and twenty thousand. So they receive one hundred and twenty. They receive half of the POP one seventy-two funds. So police receive half, fire receiving half. And then beyond that, they receive whatever they need to receive out of the general fund, purposes of sales tax.
Okay.
Whatever other money we have that we need to contribute to pay for our operations.
Because, I mean, do you read that would be five hundred twenty-eight thousand? We wouldn't have to come up with, per se, right, of that sales tax. But City of Angels is also, I would assume, I'm assuming, a, a, a pretty good generator, if not the biggest generator of sales tax in the county, I don't know.
We are a very large.
Right, so, so how much money do we need? I mean, we get five hundred twenty-eight thousand, but how much money goes, because we don't get that back, it's all going to get divided amongst that group, does that make sense?
Yes, but theoretically, we would never receive any of that to begin with.
I know.
With a whole new one percent.
It's only one percent.
So it's only one percent. So the slippery slope is, if Sonora fails.
I know, that's what I'm getting at.
And Calaveras passes. And then you've got the gap of the one to the one and a half percent. Is that enough to drive consumers out of, outside the city, outside the county? And if it does, then potentially, you would see a reduction in our general main sales tax. To what extent, I don't know. And maybe that one to one and a half percent is not enough to, you know, to justify the fuel and the vehicle to drive over to Sonora.
Right.
And so I think, you know, the flip side of that is the more we can invest in economic development here and make shopping opportunities here, the less likely people are to leave the city.
Right.
Does anybody know what Jackson's tax rate is?
So, yeah, it's, it's, it's roughly the same. Yeah. For right now. And they, I don't believe they have a toxymeshet on for that one. But I think, I think they're like seven point five five and then seven point two five.
And then does this affect the TOT?
No.
No. Okay, so that's separate. I, I have a hard time swallowing ten percent tax, close to. I mean, by the time you start adding all this up, you're like, oh my gosh. I mean, I remember, I remember the Bay Area had a ten percent tax and it was like, oh my gosh, can you imagine? And so, I mean, I know everything goes up, but. And then who is in charge of distributing these funds?
The county auditor.
The county auditor, okay.
And, and they also audit how the funds were spent in, in the previous year, who polices it?
Yeah.
I mean, it's self policing?
I didn't write that part down. John, I think they have, there's a committee, right?
There will be a committee and every department will get. Every, every department will have to go through an audit and explain how they did it and then meet the standards of what the, what the measure says. So, I mean, I think it's going to be pleased for good. And the money will come directly from the county to us. And then I'll make recommendations on how I'd like to spend the money to improve service to our community. And one thing that is good, that's something to think about, I mean, I could go on about lots of stuff here, but what's really a benefit for our community, which is totally different than any place else in the county, is you're, you have two fire departments in your city. So you're going to get double the money that's going to be put into this community for both those fire departments. So you're not just getting the five hundred thousand for here, it's going to be a game changer for out to the next fire department, John, every call. And you'll be able to staff with, you know, full-time people instead of just people making four dollars and ninety cents an hour. So that's pretty good.
Would that be less funding now than we have to pay them?
Well, that's something that we consider when we, with this happens. That would be something like right now, if you have a contracted service that we've adjusted rent, I don't think there would be any need for that. So that will be a savings out of fire budgets, potentially. We'll have to sit down around table on that stuff when we get to that point. I do think it's going to make a drastic difference when we're talking about businesses and community development and stuff like that. The better your fire department is, the more we can save lives, property and stuff like that. Brings people in, you know, maybe residents, retirees, stuff like that. My goal always as the fire chief is to constantly strive to improve services in the community. I don't mean that in a general sense, I mean, it's something tangible. And so if this program would happen here, one of the things that I want to promote here that I want to try to do is a paramedic program to our community, which will save lives within the first thirty days. It'd be drastic. And that'll also be a potential for revenue stream for us to, to make money on that. And it lines up with other departments in the quarter like Evans Pass and Copper who has a paramedic program. So that would be a big game changer, that, something that I'd want to do that you'd be able to see instantly if we get to that point. And I'm looking forward to bringing those proposals to you at a later time and be more specific and show what we can do at this point and what's the best way to spend it and how to spend it. But I, it would be a drastic change. I mean, we have two people on fire engines right now, you guys know that. The national standard is four, we'd be able to probably get to four people with this program. So we'd meet the national standard, which is a game changer for the community to understand that. And it's the same thing, if you have a paramedic, I mean, it's, it's really, it's, I mean, like, you guys have probably heard me say this, but if someone becomes critical right now, for every, every minute that paramedic is delayed to get there, your chance of survival goes down by ten percent a minute. And that's one of the things I wanted, that would be the biggest thing for our buck with this program or with the money here is to do that because eighty-five percent of our calls are emergency medical calls. There's only three ambulances in the county. If one ambulance is on a call or delayed, we commonly get ambulances from Valley Springs, San Andreas, Evans Pass. We've had them from Tuolumne multiple times, we've had them from Amador. And we have critical people, you know, overweight in thirty, forty minutes for an ambulance. So if we're going to have a paramedic there within three, four minutes, be a game changer and then we can fly that person out, you know, so.
With a paramedic program?
Sure.
Can you, like, if there's let this is calls and things like that, can you just deploy that and not have to run the big trucks?
Absolutely.
So there's a saving.
There is, there is, there is ways to do that.
Well, is it, is, are you talking about an ambulance or just a small, as I mean?
We wouldn't start all the ambulance, we'd probably try to get a vehicle that could transport in a critical situation. You can't get into the ambulance contract because that's a different plan. That, that's a little different, so there's, there's some turmoil of that plan right now going on. But the, the key and the most important thing, I mean, as Alvin knows, I started the paramedic program in Copper and designed that from A to Z. And it saved countless lives down in Copperopolis. And I think it'd be a huge benefit and a huge point for the community for us to market the city as one of the safest cities in the state, you know, when we, when we add staffing. I mean, really what's going to happen.
So is that something you're saying you want to start then, is our own initiative here, oh, separate from this measure?
No, with the money.
And do it like you, like you did with Copper?
Right.
Because you could do that on our own.
With the money that's coming in, we have enough money to start that program.
Right, but could we pass our own initiative?
We could.
So, I mean, you got it passed in Copper, you could do our own initiative here and save that one percent off our sales tax.
We could, but we can't, we have, we can't change anything.
No, no, not if that passes.
Oh, oh, I thought you were saying.
If A fails, if A doesn't, you could, if A doesn't, you could do your own initiative.
And Sonora's passes, maybe those people come over here and go, oh.
Exactly.
But, but yeah, we could. But I'm, you know, this probably isn't the point to talk about a discussion about what I'd like to do, but it's a game changer because right now, again, we have two people that show up on a fire truck. If there's a house burning, I can't even put those two people inside. I have to have two people outside. If we have the ability to increase our staffing from two to four a day.
But that's what we contract throughout the long years, so four, right?
Right, okay, that's part of it, but I need eleven people, I don't want to get into all the types.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, you're saying the two, but we actually have four, so every fire is.
So we have three dedicated, we're only paying for one now.
Right.
So you get three.
Right.
So I still need four to go inside because I got to establish two out. But the things that change are, not to get into all of it, but from an operational standpoint, it's a game changer. It'll be measured instantly on the first fire because now, because we have two and two right now, even if they show up together, I still have to wait for the third fire engine to supply water. But now, let's say we had four and four, that second engine's giving water right away. So we're fighting fires just so much faster. But the big things that you would see in this community, and I, you know, we want to market it really big, the paramedic program would be a very big deal, is that it would definitely save lives right away. And it would be something that would be super valuable, that we'd all be proud of. And that's the kind of thing that I'd like to do, so. We'll talk a lot more about that. And the stuff about the contract, yeah, that could be adjusted, obviously, if this happened. But the cool thing is, again, the people that live in this community are fortunate that there are two fire departments within the city limits. So instead of getting one tenth of the money from the county, you're going to get two tenths of the city. So that's, that's a big.
Oh, Ms. Caroline, go ahead.
Thanks, I, so I had a question for Rebecca on the, the current five hundred twenty-eight thousand that we have out, or no, the, the current funding you have our kids towards our fire department. So you said a hundred twenty thousand approximately from TOT?
Yep.
Okay, and then half from POP, was it one seventy-two?
Yep.
Okay, and then the rest comes from general funds. So if this one percent passes, are we able to take some of those funds and reallocate them for additional needs that the city might have, I mean, like the TOT, that's a factor to the fire department?
We just have to be careful with that because we, I didn't see any specific anti-silencing language in the measure, but I'm sure that that's going to be looked not favorably on. But obviously, if we run into an issue where, you know, our TOT goes down, our sales tax goes down, or any of those discretionary revenue sources where we fund general operations is getting impacted and we need to pay for those various services, all of that would have to be looked at and we would have to identify alternative funding sources for that. So it's entirely possible, you know, if we were to go to another game term, that, that, you know.
Right, I just want to, I wanted to ask if there was flexibility because of the turmoil of, who knows where the, the economy's headed and other things. And I just, you know, attacking on a one percent sales tax, I find it's, it's not, not a way that I feel that should, we should go about trying to increase money for fire. I mean, there's a lot of other ways to do that. And it really ties our hands as city council for future needs with this one percent tax on. So I'm just looking at this on a bigger scaling. If it does pass, how can we make sure that we can balance our budget still with the needs of the city? If that does go through, you know, so that's, it just needs to clear, clear it out.
So, so I think that's also, you know, why, you know, it's important that the council understands that regardless of what the marketing was in terms of why trans- these taxes should go up from ten to twelve, there is no requirement that how it's being, how it has historically been allocated remains that way. So you have flexibility in that funding source, depending on what the needs for prior needs are at the council.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Public comment, anything, online in the house? Okay, that was a discussion I had. I have a G, discussion of current project status.
Okay, so we can just run through this really fast, because Carol. Mainly I did this because I get a lot of questions, well, are we still working on this project? Or what's happening with that project? Or, you know, are we even doing this anymore? And so this is just kind of like a really high level of projects that we are actually working on. In some way or another, it could be just be planning, it could just be responding to Calcrans or, you know, actually doing, you know, shovel ground and concrete, but there's all facets. So the Angels Creek Trail, the initial phase is wrapping up, the culture review should be wrapped up within the next six weeks. And once that happens, then we can start working on the environmental document, that that's going to have to be circulated. So they are thinking circulation, that that would be like in November, December. Then once that happens, we can do right away discussions around March, April, May. And then when that happens, then we can start moving towards actual construction. So we will do that construction in terms of the Angels Creek Trail sometime in the, you know, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, this four years, which is what we lined up that SEMA swap with St. Paul. So we're on line for that, we're right on, on the correct timeline for that one. We're right on the correct timeline for that one. But as that's going on, I know that we don't have adequate funding for all the construction. And so that is something that we're looking at additional funding sources for the rest of the construction funding for Angels Creek. So even though there's a lot of these plans going on for that initial phase, we're still actively aggressively looking at funding for construction in the next two, three years. The citywide roadway safety signs, staff's going to be working on the RFP for that sign project. And we are slated for all that work to be completed by the end of this year. Where we made grant funding for that, 1,240,000. So we will start seeing signs, you know, replaced here. May not be done by summer because it's kind of like all of the RFPs out there and then who responds for all of this stuff. But it will be available in the near future. So we will see that actually happen. Beautiful Park, this is a combination of mini projects. So we are working on CDPG grant funding for components of that. So we're actively having regular meetings on that one. In addition, we are, you know, about to look at starting some planning to make sure everybody's on the same page in terms of the order that we're going to do this. Obviously, the playground is a priority. But we also don't want to get in the way of the larger construction efforts that are going to have to come in. We have the for capita grant, the donations from the Angels Camp Community Club. And then obviously, we have that $3 million Recreation and Tourism Grant. So all the projects slated for completion, March of 2025. Kitchen improvement completion this year. Generator this year. Playground we're hoping by, we're hoping or expecting it to be done by next year. We are working on a police range that we've included in the budget. And that should be done here pretty soon. There was just a couple little pieces that were going on that. That was funded with Prop 172. The downtown, the street sidewalk repairs, we are developing an RFP for that. That will be brought forward to council. I'm hoping on October 4th so that they release it. If not October 4th, it will be built in the second meeting, October. So work will be performed sometime this fall winter. And then we will also be getting a grant for $2,500 for doing that work. So we'll regret splitting it in the fall. We also are coordinating to get those frog plaques done. That's just like the whole thing.
Yeah.
So we, or the public, if anyone keeps asking, we have not forgotten. It's just trying to get hold of our old molds that we've not been able to get back and trying to find someone new to do it. If we can't get our old mold back, we have to get new molds done. And then we'll...
Back from?
The old guy that used to...
The previous, yeah.
Caltrans, 49th Building Project. This is a shock project through Caltrans, the State Highway Operational Protection Program project. So this, the part that most people are focusing on is the sidewalks downtown along Beautiful Park. And there's other sidewalks throughout Angels Camp. The initial layout hasn't been developed. And we're currently looking at landscaping details. So Amy's going to be working on getting that information to the planning commission. And that will, so again, it's kind of this planning and picking which direction we're going to go. But it is in the process of moving forward. Water treatment plant improvement project. We are working with engineering. We're going to develop some design agreements to bring forward to council in October. And we're going to finalize the budget on that. And then the funding agreement will be submitted to the State Water Resources Control Board. So we're hoping to go to construction from August, 2023. East Trump Sewer Phase One, Dolly Road, sewer replacement, boost your way, kind of put them all together because they all kind of align in terms of timeline. We are working on the right-of-way right now for the East Trump Sewer. We contact a lot of property owners. Four properties with the particulate easements. All the rest are temporary. And then we worked through all of the requests for information for Caloas and FEMA because we're going to fund portions of some of those projects. We're hoping that our vacation is going to be coming shortly. But again, we're just trying to make sure that we're in line with impacts on the Palatac Humanity project. And we're hoping to get construction scheduled for February, 2023 on the local... Wayfinding signs, it's still a project. We're still moving forward on that. Calgress County is administering that project. The city, we have our plans all ready to go. So we were in a, we're just kind of sitting waiting. Caltrans is pushing to get the signs installed by next spring, summer. And so I would expect, you know, kind of 12 to 18 months. But they're working with all of the other agencies in the area to move forward on that. And then pavement management, we had a report done in 2019. We're working with engineering to develop a database that public works can use. And that database is going to help us align other projects to, for pavement repairs and replacements. We'll fund those with a combination of gas tax, local transportation funding, and other restricted funding that's available. And also, we're always looking for grant funding. But we believe in one. So if we have a water, wastewater project or anything, we want to make sure that that aligns with our payment and the project. So we're not taking and then reviewing and then reviewing. Uh, thank you. And that's it.
Okay. I have no space for report. Or actually, any public comment on that? Same amount hearing that from you. Adam H., administration report.
Just a reminder that the survey opened. There was a recommendation that, you know, we probably need to hit the farmer's market, the last farmer's market in, that's going to be on September 30th. I was talking to Aqua members and they said that is the most dependent farmer's market of the year. So Michelle is going to be down there in Eugene with workers down there who are going to do the survey. So as of last week, there were 100 in the city survey that doesn't sound like very much. Citygate has assured me that's actually a really good response for a city of our size. I don't like it, but, so anyway. So the recommendation is with the additional outreach on 30th, you know, September. And then hopefully getting some more engagement out there online, Facebook, and people going word of mouth if we could keep it open until the end of October. All it does is it makes it, you know, and we're just pushing the timeline. So that means we're not going to be doing workshops for a little bit longer. But I think if we can get the most responses possible, that would be important to this year's event hall. So just hoping to sure that we give people enough time to do that, I think is a good idea. So my...
What's the deadline we have set for?
September 30th.
So you want to extend it one month?
One month.
How many residents do we have?
Our population is 2,800, plus the rest 1,100. But you've got to think there's a bunch of children. So I think that ours is helpful.
Two, one?
That's what that is. So I am still regularly engaging with Citygate. They're regularly giving confirmation of plans and employee survey responses, community survey responses. I'll be curious to see what the numbers are after the farmer's market. So I'll look forward to that to be helpful. And call for projects for council of governments. That will be on the next meeting for council. And then ATCA, which has been supporting the low-income healthful water assistance program. We have had even more people getting assistance through that program. So they've been doing a lot of work with staff. So it's going to create a helpful program to support.
Council reports.
The county surveys were fantastic. We're actually off of, and I would have to be...
I have 20 I pulled in.
So, and... Glencoe yesterday, Isabelle and I attended. We're still getting closer to the MSR, the Municipal Services Review for all of the CSDs. There were a lot of changes that were made. Really, nothing affects the city in any way, but there are, countywide, there's one CSD in... Person? The Person? Glencoe, sorry, that's not compliant. So we have to decide what we're going to do with that. We went through and redid our conflict of interest code. We re-adopted one. And then we talked about the Calafton Conference. I also attended Homecoming, which was awesome. Very, very well attended. I have friends at Fair and the Historic Society the rest of this week. UGPA next week.
I'll be there.
Yes.
Carolyn.
I haven't had a whole lot going on, but thanks to Ben Stoker for giving a little piece of my update, which was about the economic development money and working with the board of supervisors. And so if we could, we're in agreement to do a meeting with them. I think that would probably happen in November. So that's all I have on my end. I do have some meetings this week. And I'll have a lot to report on at the next.
Thank you.
So I attended COG and... What are the things that artifacts have been found at the site for the Wacker Trail and they're being recorded? The project's guideline funding SNF has been on control. Caltrans reported it was 2.2... To use 2.2, they were...
Yeah.
She gave that report at the end and she was heading it out. So...
Yeah, the Zoom video, yeah. It was 2.2. The Zoom video was not, not happy.
Yeah, it's either a billion or a million.
Yeah, it's a lot. I'm assuming a billion, a billion for district. I'm assuming a billion for district.
Right. And then the CTA meeting, what was nice to know there is that the ridership has increased by 29% over the year. And Valorant is a very popular form of transportation that people are using. And then I attended, Jenna and I attended the DMX event after our town at the reception, which was really... We were fish on the water. We didn't know who any of those people were. But apparently, we were amongst legends, which is nice.